Can I get a motion to open the meeting?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Thank you. All right, so we are going to start with the budget workshop. Budget comes later. We'll pledge later. Okay. Sounds good. Thank you.
Good evening, members of the board. Superintendent Graves, members of the community. Dr. Philip Kenter, the school business administrator here at Sag Harbor. And I'd like to present tonight's budget is entitled Revenue and Appropriated Fund Balance, Projections, and Transportation Budget Workshop. So that's what we'll be talking about tonight. This is a tough slide to look at, but it's a slide that shows up. It actually answers a question from the previous workshop meeting that one of the board members had regarding there was a line item missing in athletics, $12,600. And so what we did is we modified the budget and the slide. And you'll notice in green at the very bottom of this particular slide, right here, we have the title Athletic Trainer for $12,600. So we've now placed that line item back into the budget with the explanation. And then what I wanted to show the board is that if we go to the very next page.
Do we have this printed out? Are your --
It's in your --
Thank you so much.
Yeah.
Are they today?
Yeah, under March the 12th.
Okay, thank you.
So if we come down here under 2018-19 proposed budget, I have in the green box in red letters the $12,600. And we're pulling that money out of these categories. We pulled a little bit out of each one. And in speaking with the athletic director, we can do that, maintain the integrity of these programs, and yet pay for the $12,600 from here back to here for the athletic trainer. So it zeroes out, but the money's accounted.
Can I ask a question about this before we move forward?
Sure.
Terrific, thank you. Just two questions. One, if we -- and this is kind of a philosophical question, but I think it helps because when we present a budget to the public and say, "This is what we need," and then a few meetings later, we come back and say, "Well, we could just take $12,600 of the same categories and we were fine." I think it's helpful to explain how that could happen. And then secondly, in previous years, many previous years, we broke out equipment, and we're not doing that this year. So I just wanted to raise that as an issue because we were so committed to having a transparent budget. And over the years, we've really said, "Okay, we're going to break out every item so that the public knows exactly how we plan on spending the money." And we obviously don't want to depart from that because otherwise, we're asking them to vote on a budget that's not transparent, and we can't endorse that. So I was wondering, do we have that broken out?
I would have to defer to the athletic director on that because he provided me the information. So I can tell you from a monetary standpoint, we're pulling the money from here to put it there.
Right.
But the actual programs, he would have to address.
Okay. Because I know the previous budgets, for instance, under equipment, we had 111 line items where it was specific to each investment. This year, it's rolled up to 11 lines of just summaries by sport, not even by team. So it's -- the data has to be there, but I think it's important that the public sees it and that the board sees it, you know, throughout the budget, that we get that level of transparency. Otherwise, I don't know how we can endorse it.
Sure.
Well, I wanted to consider just for a minute that part of the reason that we lost Jennifer Kusheini, absolutely, that she very clearly articulated, was the level of work that she had to put in into the late nights for the level of transparency. And I think the board has to have a conversation at some point when we ask for these things. Because right now, I would like our time dedicated to safety and security. And I think the board has to have a conversation. Do they need to know how many baseballs, how many basketballs? Because it isn't simply a pushing of a button. It's a lot of work. And Jennifer worked long, long hours, and it's the reason she left Sag Harbor was the amount of work that she was putting in, coming in in the morning, working until nine o'clock at night. Because the board would ask for things. And we have a tremendous amount of transparency. And if there's a concern or a worry that what does this look like, that a question could be answered. But right now, I know that my -- our cabinet, your district cabinet, is putting every ounce of their effort right now into focusing on safety and security while running a school district, while putting a budget together, while looking at projections of how we're moving forward. And day-to-day, running a school district, and Phil is learning his job, like, yes, we did go. We're still doing the zero level budget. There's no doubt about it. We go down to zero. We're not doing a rollover. We're doing a zero level budget. But it isn't a simply just releasing an Excel spreadsheet. It is a lot of work because there's things that have to be redacted, there's things that have to be -- there's a lot of work in that. So -- and Jennifer did that level of work because she found it challenging, found it interesting to bring our level down to that perfect amount. I just, you know, it doesn't have to be answered now, but, you know, it's interesting to look at how many baseballs and how many softballs. But that means you have to extract all that information and put it into Excel spreadsheets from the orders, you know? It has to come from somewhere and it has to be inputted. And most of the time, Jennifer's doing all that inputting. So --
Okay. I would just add that she didn't do it because she found it interesting? I mean, from even before I was on the board, right before I was on the board, that board moved because we had concerns that we didn't have enough in reserves, all this stuff. We're going to do zero-based budgeting, which means everything is detailed. So that when you have an athletic director or a teacher asking for money, they have to write a laundry list specifically of what they're asking for. Otherwise, that's not zero-based budgeting. So the athletic director would have created this list already, I would assume. Otherwise, how would he know how much he needs? But let me just finish, please. But it wasn't because she found it interesting. It was because the board, year after year, said, "This is critically important, and this is how we're going to operate." So I just want to clarify that. Because I was here even before Jennifer was here, and we were committed to it.
So I think the point's a good one, that if we are going to request the extra hours, the labor hours required to create that level of detail, that it needs to be the will of the board because there's cost associated with that, and there's labor hours associated with that. And it isn't as simple as a simple suggestion, so we would have to get the will of the board if we want to move in that direction.
So what did it cost us for the past five years when it was done?
So, for example, the first year we were here --
Cost us our business official.
Yeah, cost us our business official left because of it. There's no doubt about it.
But even before she was here, we had much more detail than we have now. But anyway.
So let's continue to work through the process, and then if later on, we want to have a discussion about whether we want them to go back and provide more information, then we can get the will of the board and decide about something.
And see what you think is missing, like, you know, what you're really worried about. Because like, for example, from a winter season, we would extract how many basketballs. So we have to take those off the requisitions and put those onto Excel sheets. We have to take how many uniforms off the requisitions and put those onto Excel sheets moving forward.
Yeah, can I just make one point, following up on what Chris said? And it's actually something I wanted to ask at the last meeting and didn't get a chance to. So I recall a previous budget where it was, we were told as a community, as a board, "We need this X amount because we're buying new basketballs and we're getting new uniforms." But then what happened is the next budget had the same exact amounts there. So the question that popped out in my mind, and it's not about basketball specifically, but it's about, it raises questions. So if we already spent that money because we got new uniforms and we got basketballs, why are we having to spend that same amount of money the next year? We don't need a whole nother set of new basketballs. So what is that money then being used for? So I think that's, at least for me, that's the question I have.
And those are great questions to have for that person that's in front of you, like your athletic director. And I can probably go ahead and answer that question, even though he's not here, is that then it's the lacrosse team that we just brought up.
But it was on the basketball line.
Right. So every year, it's somebody's getting, maybe another basketball team. So everybody's getting allocated as they rise up. And also, we do have, you know, we do have things that get hurt and destroyed, and they're expensive.
We'll wait till he comes back so we can ask him that question. Thank you for having me today.
Sure. Okay. So let me just move on. So now I'd like to direct your attention to the proposed transportation budget that we've structured. And this was structured by looking at past data and in consultation with our transportation director, and then looking at the expenses that we have with different categories. So in yellow, you'll see that's what we're proposing for 2018-19. And in the maroon color, that's what we currently are operating with in 2017-18. And I wanted to point out that for, in particular, for noneducational salaries, which are our bus drivers and our bus aides, you'll note that there's an increase of 11.4 percent. It's going from $396 to $442. And that's because we're looking at adding additional bus driver staff to the transportation department. And on the next slide, I'll show you how that breaks down. You'll see that in 2017-18, our current budget for district transportation is $206,880. We're going up to $221,880. It's a 7.3 percent increase. That primarily eludes to field trips, interscholastic athletics, overtime, and shared services. We had approximately, well, we added $5,000 per line in an anticipated increase. If you go to the next page in your booklet and what we have here on the slide, this slide explains the new routes that we have and the reason for the additional staffing in the transportation department. This particular slide shows you our current 2017-18 budget in detail. So you can see from bus repairs to glass to bus chew, shell, fuel oil, barnwell tires, all the line items are here and what we've budgeted for. And you'll see that, let me get my laser just to point out, so all of these items comprise this number, the $136,750. And we have spent, it's spent so far to date, $114,000 in these different codes, and we've got $22,500 remaining. Now, I'm going to go to the next slide, which shows you the same exact thing, but what we're proposing for 2018-19. And we're looking at a 1.2 percent increase in the expenses. And that was based on our contacting the different suppliers that we use. So we're going from $136,750 to $138,450. Going to the next slide. This shows district transportation insurance. We were told by NYSER to budget for a 2 percent increase. That may change. It may remain flat, but for now, we budgeted 2 percent. District transportation supplies, we've maintained $4,500. And fuel and gasoline, we've estimated a 2 percent increase, going from $114,500 to In this slide, we're looking at a flat item with equipment of $1,000, and that might be something they need in transportation. Nothing's been spent yet, but we're budgeting for $1,000. We have this item, let me just go back, I'm sorry. This item, I wanted to show, you'll see in contractual transportation for 2017-18, we're currently at $105. And for 2018-19, that number's jumped up to $336. And the bulk of that, $306 of that, is from Montauk Bus for the transportation that they are providing for us. And as far as contract field trip, contractual field trips, we estimated $60 increase, which is 2 percent. On contractual trips for middle school and high school, we kept that flat at zero. You'll see, it didn't increase. And for interscholastic sports, we also kept that flat at zero for $75,000 once again. This slide will show that in 2017-18, we had budgeted and expended $265,444 for new buses. And for 2018-19, we're only looking to spend $52,715 to replace bus two, which is a minibus.
And how long have we had that minibus?
I can tell you, I'm going to go to the next slide. I have a prepared chart that you might find interesting. This chart, I'm sorry, it might be hard to read, but I'll use my laser pointer. The, each bus is numbered 1 through 18, the manufacturer, the model of the bus, the year it was purchased. So I have to tell you, as your new business official, I'm very impressed that your fleet, the oldest bus in your fleet is an '09 when you started the department. So that's remarkable. I'm very accustomed to working in transportation departments where buses are 15 and 16 years old. So this is remarkably impressive. And look at, these are your new buses from 2017, the dates that we purchased them, and then the mileage. We, for a district out on the East End, we do put a lot of mileage on our buses. So that's a pretty interesting chart.
So I'm sorry, Dr. Kers, so which one of those buses is being replaced?
So we're looking at replacing bus number two, which is the Ford. It's a small bus that's wheelchair-activated. It's got 181,000 miles on it. But I had mentioned to Superintendent Graves that, and with our facilities director, Mr. Visser, that we don't intend to get rid of the bus. Once we take it out of service as a bus, we want to fix it up and turn it into a maintenance truck. So we'll keep it in the district for that purpose.
Turn it into a what?
A maintenance truck.
Oh, thank you.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, a maintenance truck goes out? Define what a maintenance truck is in a district.
So we would take the seats out, and we would put shelving in, and tools, and a workbench, and that could float around to our three buildings for painting, minor repairs, that type of thing.
That's great.
I've done that in so long.
Yeah, I thought you meant, when you said maintenance, I was envisioning bus maintenance.
Oh, no, 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 like for the, for the facilities department. This just kind of recaps your fleet replacement reserve plan. And that was created by voter approval, May 18, 2010. And the purpose of the reserve fund is to finance in whole or part the replacement of our fleet of buses. And we also monitor the reserve annually. And that's done by the board, you, and our superintendent, and myself. This next slide talks about that. The funding level can no longer be funded with any more money unless it's increased by voter approval. And as of June 30, when we had our financial report done, you'll note that we have $1,901,000 in that fund. And that's, so we have that money available to replace the fleet as we need to. So this is a summary page of our transportation department. And again, in maroon is our current 2017-18 budget. And when you see the expenses, they're not complete because we're still in the year. The year ends June 30. And in yellow is what we're proposing for 2018-19, based on our best forecast of expenditures and what things will cost us. And so in the first category, we're looking at an increase by $60,353 in salaries. And that's primarily because of the three additional runs that we now have. In this category, district transportation, you actually see a decrease of $208,000. And that's because we're only buying the one minibus for next year. All the other vehicles are in really good shape and new. In this category, the next category, that increased by $231, and that's primarily due to the Montauk Bus contract. And when you look at everything, when you do a comparison of where we are, which is $1,349, $172 for this year, and what we're proposing as $1,432, $246, it's an increase of $83,074, or 6.16 percent increase. But that, and that's a pure expense, but I have another slide I want to show you how that's offset by the revenue we're taking in, particularly with, we have Wayne Scott and the other, and Bridgehampton. So I'm going to show you that slide shortly.
So when we have that, when we have the 6 percent, Phil and I thought --
It's really not 6.
It was important to say, "See the note," because --
Correct.
We have to keep our revenues separate from our expenses.
That's correct.
We don't get the joy that they have in business of being able to show those, you know, things together. We have to keep them segregated. So it's a little painful for us. So you see a 6 percent. We're trying to keep everything at 2 percent, but when he can show you the revenue side.
What I thought I would do, I just moved ahead to slide 19, just to show that point. So in each of the, this is Bridgehampton, this is Sagaponak, that's Wayne Scott. And these amounts show what we've taken in to date, how much income we've taken in from those three school districts, $151,000. And what we're projecting to take in by the end of the year, by June 30, is $279,234. What we budgeted, particularly for Wayne Scott Transportation Services, was a total of $247,500. And if you notice here, we're projecting $241,640 to come in. So right now, it's looking like we may have slightly over-projected the budget by about $6,000, but we'll have to see. That's where we're looking at right now. That may change. But if these numbers continue to be constant, our budgeting was pretty close to accurate, only being off by $6,000. I have to say, that's remarkable because budgeting, we're budgeting, you know, for the future, a year and a half from now, that's pretty good estimating.
So that's all revenue? That's all --
That's correct. So this revenue is what's offsetting that expense that I'm not showing you on slide 16. So in other words, this slide shows you the pure expense, and this slide shows you the money that will come in to offset that expense.
This is really helpful. Just a suggestion, and you may think it's valuable or not, but in the past several years, the board had requested, at the beginning of a presentation, just a summary slide with two or three bullet points that highlight the differences or key things, because not everybody goes through the pages. So in the future, if we do that, that might be something you want to put on the cover that, you know, it goes up X, but actually, we're getting revenue blah or whatever. Because folks sometimes can see it and not realize. But that's a good one.
Sure.
I had a question about the bus, the new bus we buy. Do we have to go out to the, I'm asking so that the public knows, do we have to go out to the public to get approval to spend that money to buy a bus?
No, because that's already --
It's already in the reserves.
Right.
So then we have the right to buy without going out.
And in fact, if you give me a second, I can pass this around to show you what the quote we got. It's from the same company that we've been buying some of our other vehicles. They gave me a pretty detailed quote. There it is. This company, Nesca. I just have the one copy, but it always shows you the details of what the specifications are of the bus.
Jim, do you have a question?
I'm sorry, I just needed a minute to wrap my brain around this. So I'm looking, in August 2006, we purchased three new buses for $76,000. And in 2008, we had to contract out to Montauk Bus Company for $306, that's what we're looking at. Do we know how many buses that is?
I believe that's for four buses.
Four buses from Montauk?
Yes.
Now, we have these bus sharing agreements and these contracts. Is there a way that if we have less contracts and we were using our buses instead of with the contracts, we'd save more money than contracting out to have to spend $300,000?
It's complicated because for some of them, it's for like the sports runs or the special education runs. So it's a little bit of a dance, and I know Jennifer analyzed that pretty carefully. So I would have to go back and look.
And one of the problems with that also is we were, we're short drivers, and Montauk typically will not allow a school district's drivers to use their equipment. And they've got, so they've got the people power that we don't have. And that's a big part of why we contracted with Montauk.
Now, last year, we got a different answer to that last year. So that's, I was going to jump in. I don't know if it's true, but last year, this came up, and it's a good question. And we were told that there are times during the school day, during the school year, where we need more buses than we have. Not often, but when we do that, that's sometimes when we outsource as well. So, you know, if, I don't know how much of that is the outsourcing versus the lack of staff. The lack of staff is something entirely different that we didn't get.
Which was part of my answer, is it's complicated, and Jennifer analyzed that, and that's why we do some of the contracting for, like I said, the sports runs. It's not, it's not in our best interest to have a full-time driver when it's just for, you know, a morning run and then run that are after school time. It's not for dedicated runs.
And Katie, I don't know if, you know, the answer to the follow-up is, is half the company that's doing the analysis on the transit, is that something they look into to see if --
Yeah. They're looking at all of this.
Absolutely. We provide them all that data. So, absolutely.
And they're going to do their first round at our next board meeting. And what, if there is additional cost, the board will have three choices that will either redo this for the board and re-present it. Or if it's a more nominal cost, then we can either, the board can make the choice to go into their general reserve, or we can work with what excess funding we have, which we have with each school year because of, you know, a position that hasn't been filled, or someone goes out on maternity leave for those items. So they'll have three choices to work with. But we'll have to see what the costs are going to be.
And the reserves, is that only to repair and update what we already have, or can that be used to purchase?
No, we have our general reserves, which is 4 percent.
No, the transportation reserves.
Oh, the transportation reserves are for purchases.
That's just for the purchases of the vehicles.
Not repair and maintenance?
No. We would budget that in the operating, the athletic budget.
We're in great shape, board.
Yeah. Yeah, we sure are. I'd like to draw your attention to this next slide because, just to go back. So we're done with transportation. That was the summary. And the second part of tonight's presentation talks about the revenue, what we're proposing as revenue, funding sources, where we're getting our money from to pay for the budget for 2018-19. So I'd like to just take a moment, walk you through that, if I may. This first section is a summary of the state aid that is proposed to us that we should receive. And what happens there, I get a booklet from the state, and they basically give us, this is what's proposed, it's not definitive, and you can use this for budgeting purposes. So we break down all the various aids that we're entitled to, and we come up with a total. And for 2018-19, New York State is telling us that we're looking at, right now, $1,959,258. Then, payments in lieu of taxes, pilots, those are typically overground or underground lines, PSEG, cable vision, some of the utilities. And we're paid a fee, if you will, for those lines that traverse our properties. Sometimes it's water lines. So we're, we were receiving $140. This year, we received $150. I budgeted $150 for next year because I don't know what the exact number will be, but it should be in that vicinity. Non-resident tuition, that is the amount of money, based on the chart that we structured and the new tuition rates that the board approved. That is our best estimate right now, based on student count, as to what our income will be for 2018-19, $724,511. And I have a more detailed chart to break that down, which I'll show you momentarily. Charges for facilities usage, shared services, a lot of that, we're looking at $250,000. It's a little bit down from what we earned this year. Also, in grants interest and miscellaneous revenue, that's down slightly from $145,000 to $117,000. And that's really, that's based on actual incomes versus budgeted for 2017-18. Then, we performed the tax cap calculation. And when it was all said and done, and what was reported to the state, and what was in Newsday Sunday, is that we reported our maximum tax cap at 4.0229 percent, 4.02. That entitles us to a maximum tax levy of $37,748,646. And that's the number that we plugged in for this -- And that's the number that we plugged in for this, uh, this variable. Uh, appropriations from, uh, ERS reserve, I'm carrying forward the same five hundred thousand dollars that Jen did in the previous years. Uh, and for appropriated fund balance, at this point, uh, this can increase, but, uh, right now, I, I put it in at ninety-four thousand, nine hundred and eighteen dollars. I dropped it significantly. So I put together a tentative revenue of forty-one million, five forty-four, three eighty-nine. And I need to temper that number by saying, um, it's kind of like putting the cart before the horse, because I'm giving you this number, but I don't yet know what all the expenses will be projected yet from the district. So, uh, normally, I would, uh, present this to you at a later date, but at least it gives you an idea at four point zero two percent with the tax levy you pay. And then the changes are there, and, and you could see that it's a one million, six hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollar increase, or a four point one zero percent increase from our current year. Now, um, if we go to the next page?
Oh, hold on, before we go ahead, can I just ask two quick questions? Um, the, with the non-resident tuition, the budget from two thousand and seven, eighteen to two thousand and eighteen, nineteen is a significant lead. Can you, can you give us just a backdrop as to why and then?
I can, sure I can. Mm-hmm. Let me go to the next page. Here we are. Here are the tuitions, uh, broken down in four categories, parentally placed, Sagaponic, Wayne Scott, and Amagansett. So, the one thing I asked Katie if I could change this year, and she gave me permission to, I didn't want to go with all the specific breakdowns, grade by grade, so you'll see, I went K through six and seven through twelve, just for, you know, clarity of the chart. But, and then you'll see the student counts, those are actual student counts that we know of as of Friday, as to how many students will be coming here next year. Those are actual student counts, and those are the actual rates that we're looking at, which let me just highlight. These are the rates that the board approved, right here. So this chart shows you where we're at now, okay? For a total of, our actual projected for seventeen, eighteen is six fifty-six, four fifty-eight. If you go back, I just want to point something out. Let me go back. I love doing this, I really do.
We way under budgeted this year.
Exactly, that's exactly what happened.
This is our actual-
When the budget was structured, we didn't know how many students were going to be here, so the budget was structured very, very conservatively. But what happened in reality-
It was new, a lot of what we were doing-
That's exactly right.
Well, we had, we had, um, we had just struck our, um, contracts with Sagaponic and Wayne Scott, and what we clearly said was, unless they have enrolled, we're not counting them.
Right.
And, and what we're also seeing is, this is also very conservative, because our enrollment has not begun yet for parental place for next year, for Sagaponic, for Wayne Scott, that, so we're going to see this under budgeted again for next year. So, because they're going to, they're going to enroll. So all the rising fourth graders and fifth graders that come from Sagaponic and Wayne Scott, they're going to show up on our enrollment. And so, once again, we're going to get a lift in, in that part of the budget. But normally, you would, Jennifer and I had decided on it, and Phil also agreed, is to be really conservative. We could say, oh, we think we're going to get five, six, seven, ten students, but that's not conservative budgeting. So conservative budgeting is, we're going to pretend like we're not going to get any students, and we're going to just go with the numbers we have. And I think that's really the smartest way to go.
Hope the board agrees. I just had a quick question on the Amagansett tuition for K through six, was S E V, special ed?
Yes, that's correct.
I'm sorry, where is Stella Maris factor into here?
It, it doesn't, this is just, this is just, uh, tuitions-
These are just, um, in Sagaponic-
These are kids coming from those other districts to our district.
Correct, but aren't we going to receive income once our pre-K opens?
We have pre-K now.
No, they're in nursery, talking about the private nursery.
Yeah.
Yeah, that, that would be, that would, that wouldn't be any of these.
Wouldn't be in tuition, it's a different tuition.
That would be, that would be-
That would be an additional, uh, amount of tuition or income we would take in.
Correct, but we're not forecasting that this-
I don't, I, because it's not operating yet.
But we, we don't do tuition for pre-K, correct?
Right, we do, well, they, um, Sagaponic and Wayne Scott tuition in for pre-K, if you see the lines up there. But again, we don't, what our practice has been is not until they're registered to be counted as income.
So-
It's conservative.
But, but in other words, I guess what I'm trying to say is, we will have parentally placed tuition in nursery. We will add a line to this.
Once it's open, yeah.
Once it's open.
Because we don't, we don't know how many, it would be a total guess, right?
Correct, but our projected opening is January of, what year am I in?
Nineteen.
Nineteen, which is eighteen, nineteen budget.
It'd be the second half.
So there could be a potential footnote here of not only, there's a double plus plus. Once the parentally placed Wayne Scott, Sagaponic really line up at the door.
Well, Wayne Scott and Sagaponic are, um, they, those boards of education have given their students, their parents, choice. So those districts pay that tuition.
Mm-hmm.
Not parents. So those, they pay the full ride for their children to come here. They are given, they've given, they're, they now have a choice, so they can either go to East Hampton, or they can go to Sag Harbor.
So, just to clarify, for pre-K, can you tuition in as a parental?
Yes.
Yes.
For pre-K?
Yep.
And then when we go to Stella Maris and we have the private daycare center?
Mm-hmm.
And obviously, that contract has not been set up, but wouldn't the revenue be in, instead of in tuition, wouldn't it be in rent?
For the, for the daycare, it would be rent.
Okay.
Right, and that's a nonprofit, right? We're not making a profit on that, because we're not profitable, because we're not running it.
We would, we would be rent, we would be charging rent to whoever's running the daycare.
Right, but it would, that would, that would be, it would be a different li- line item in the budget, right?
Yeah, but it would be, it would be-
It would be a profit, we're not running it for free.
We aren't running it for free, we're just making money. Yeah.
We're not a profit-making organization, that's what I mean, it's to cover the co- any costs that are incurred.
Yeah.
And can I ask one other minor question on slide seventeen, seventeen? Um, the four point oh two-two-nine as the tax levy, is that, are you saying that that's the maximum we'd be able to do?
Yeah.
Okay, so it's very possible we'd be, do able to do less than that.
Yes, and, and I'm going to progress through, I have a couple scenarios to show you.
Okay.
Great.
Um, and I think that this is why this is earlier in our, um, I think that this is something the board requested years earlier, is to see this early in the game, for the hope of no surprises, so that you had ample time to discuss and contemplate where you wanted to land. Because for the last four years, we've had building starts, we've had, um, all those factors that, that push our levy limit up a little higher than other school districts do, so you have room to make some choices. So, we, we're doing the same thing you've done years past, where, um, uh, Phil has developed scenarios for you to look at.
Which is great, can I ask another question on seventeen, and I appreciate that, it's really helpful, and then it also means that we in the community can look at what that percentage is early enough on. So, if you go back to seventeen, can you just highlight, under building aid, it looks like it's going up dramatically? And, so I'm just curious about that, and then under, um, high cost, excess cost, and private excess cost aid, it's going down very significantly, can you just, because there's those big swings, can you just share with us what's going on there?
I can certainly explain the building aid portion, it's, it's proportionate to what we've submitted to state ed for, uh, for assistance based on the projects that, that we have already have in the hopper that were completed. And so, you've, you've done a lot of work, uh, in your buildings, uh, in the last two to three years. So, that's what would have jumped you from the one sixty-three to the two sixty, almost a hundred thousand dollar increase.
So is that based on work that's already been done, or work that we're proposing during that year that we want money?
No, it, it's completed work.
So you get a hindsight, you get a, like reimbursement on work, on money already spent.
That's right, so once the work is done, we have to, uh, get every, we have to get a certain completion from the architectural firm. We fill out all the completion documentation, send that up to the state. Usually takes them a couple months to turn it around and approve it, and then we, and then we get our reimbursement.
And, and is that the money, when you submit that, can, can bond projects be included in that, or is that just operational? Or is it anything you do?
Anything we do, um, a bond is just a means by which we pay for it. So if you think about it, it's kind of like, it's kind of like the state giving us a percentage rebate for, for accomplishing the work. And they encourage it, because they'd like to see school districts keep up with new infrastructure.
Right.
So, so that's the reason why they do that.
They want to know that we're, we're, we're keeping the schools safe, we're building it, we're taking care of it. So that's their incentive for you to continue to take care of it.
It makes sense.
Right, and that's also why we do that five-year building condition survey, because they want to make sure that we're aware of what might be remiss, what we should look at, fits in.
Thank you.
Sure, so, um, okay.
I just have one more question about the tuition. Do we anticipate that we will get an increase based on the fact that Mercy is closing at the end of this year?
That's a great question, but we only found that out at four-thirty this afternoon.
Yeah.
Uh, that, I got, my son goes to Mercy.
Oh, I'm sorry then.
And we just found out, and, and I, it ha- it just happened, so we don't know, I don't know what the impact is going to be.
Do we transport students to Mercy?
We, we have student, we have students at Mercy, and, um, I'm not sure, those, those parents are fairly committed to that, um, that Catholic education, so, um, I think that, you know, I've had a lot of conversations with those parents, and I, um, they love Sag Harbor, they think Sag Harbor's a great school, but they really wanted that Catholic education, because they had that Catholic education. So, you know, I think this will be really tough for them. I think some of them will have to come back here, um, so I think we'll see the change for that, so.
Thank you.
Okay. So, um, again, this tuition, we, it just shows, uh, seventeen, eighteen is here on this side. Eighteen, nineteen proposed is on this side, we're going from six fifty-six to seven twenty-four, and that number is on chart, uh, page seventeen. Okay, I think, so I think that explains the revenues, I think it explains the tuition. We've talked about this one already. So now let me take it to this chart. You're going to love this chart, because this is your financial health of how we, how we are and where we are. And it's as of June thirtieth. So, basically, let me just, um, do a, a quick recap. Uh, what happens is that, uh, the external auditors come in every year. They, they audit our records, our books, our income, our receipts, our payroll, our deposits, our expenditures. Uh, they look at everything, they make sure everything is coded properly, they look at all of our bank accounts, all of our reserves. Uh, and they come up with, uh, as you know, they give you a final report, uh, letting you know of any recommendations they have for the district, which is titled a corrective action plan. And then, and part of that report, it also lists out where all of your money is. And this chart, I know it's hard to, to read, but that's why there's a copy in your booklet, but this chart, on one page, shows you exactly where all your money is as of June thirtieth. And, um, just to, to walk you through, and for the audience to walk you through. Uh, the first category, assigned, you'll see two twenty-eight, one eighty-one. The, the line you want, everyone wants to look at is right here. This is where we want to, this is where we are, okay? Two twenty-eight, one eighty-one, that's money that's allocated to pay for seventeen, uh, sixteen, seventeen expenses that we have, that we budgeted for, but we would not build yet, or that the work had not been completed. So the money is set aside, and we're waiting for the final bill, usually based on when the project gets completed. So there's two twenty-eight there, sitting there, that money's basically assigned or designated, and that's why they call it assigned. And then here's all your reserves. So, the first one is employee benefit accrued liability, or EVAR, and you have three sixty-one, three twenty-five in that reserve. Your retirement reserve, or employee retirement system, we have two million, one sixty-six, three fifty in that reserve. In your facilities capital reserve, and that's the one, I believe, we're going to tap into when we start doing work over at Stella, is, uh, two million, six hundred and thirty-two, one forty-three. We have the transportation fleet replacement reserve, that's the one we talked about earlier. You have one point nine million dollars in that reserve. You have an insurance reserve of one million, four ninety-four, one twenty-seven. Um, you have an unemployment reserve of one hundred thousand, four ninety-four. You have a workers' comp reserve of five oh one, two forty. You have a very healthy repair reserve of one million, five hundred and two thousand, six seventy-three. And again, um, I need to talk with, uh, Mr. De Silver on that, but we're going to maybe try to use some of that repair reserve to do some of the repairs at Stella. And, uh, our appropriated fund balance is two seventy-one, six twenty-two. So what I'm going to ask you to do, is let's just go back, just remember that number, two seventy-one, six twenty-two. Because you're going to see that number. Give me a pointer. Why am I not, oh, here it is, right here. You can see how we have that money appropriated for this year to balance out our budget. So that's how, that's kind of how it works.
The appropriated fund balance, um, is it, is it strategically healthy for us to have it be diminished to that little amount?
Generally, it, it depends on how much is spent. So, we put that money in to balance the budget, but it doesn't necessarily mean that all that money will be spent.
Because I, I thought, maybe, maybe I'm thinking of the wrong fund balance, so I apologize. I thought that the state had recommended a range for your-
Oh, we're not there yet, you're definitely right, that's the four percent.
That's, that's the four percent.
I'm going to show you that.
Okay, thank you.
So, that's the next category. You see where it says, unreserved, undesignated?
Yeah.
Just move ahead. Okay, and that's right here, and you have one million, five hundred, ninety-six thousand, two hundred and eighty-one dollars. That is exactly four percent of your budget, and that is exactly what the state says we can have. So we're doing really well there.
Excellent.
And, uh, when you add everything together, and you should really be proud of yourselves. You have a total of twelve million, seven fifty-five, nine hundred and fifty-eight in your bank account, and in all your reserves. And the increase in that from, uh, year to year, you went from one point four to one point eight. So you increased, uh, your, your, your book value by, by a little over four hundred thousand dollars from, from year to year. So, you're doing very well.
Did that answer your question, Susan?
Yeah, I had a quick question, I just had a quick question about where the one point five from the surplus funds for the transportation, uh, replacement came from. Was that from an additional bond we did, or was that from another fund that was transferred over? Like, where did that one five come from?
That is a reserve that the board authorized.
Yep.
And for the specific designation of repairs to, to the district's facilities.
I think she's asking where the funds actually came from, and that was from the end of the year.
Oh, that, I'm sorry, that's, yes, whatever money is left over at the end of the year, so our-
The transportation, please.
So, so when we talk about capturing savings throughout the year, so, um, positions that aren't filled, or, like, did, or, and since we didn't incorporate all those tuitions. So, all that extra tuition that we incorporated into the, um, into the budget, what was basically found money-
For cable, okay.
That, that all adds up. Um, when people, uh, teachers take maternity leaves and they don't, and take a substitute comes in at a much lower salary, that's captured savings. So all that captured savings, the auditors go through all that and say, okay, here's, here's what is left over. And in November, we, we set aside where those funds are going to go, and then they get put into those reserves. So we make that plan in November, so last November, before the school year, when it started school year, we said, if we have extra funds at the end of the year, they have to go into a specific reserve, so we have a plan ahead of time. And that was funds that we had, because we captured so much savings throughout the school year. Yeah.
So is there ever an opportunity, I mean, obviously, that's doing a great job to capture all that, um, at some point, where we can also then just either give back to the taxpayers, or greatly reduce the, um, the ta- the tax, you know, rate that would go out?
You, you want to be really careful, because what we also know, and when you've been doing the negotiation process, is we know that the biggest lion's share of what we do is, is salaries and healthcare costs, and healthcare costs, we kind of have to hold our breath. And this year, healthcare costs went up, and our ERS and TRS went up. We, we don't always know when that's going to happen, so those are the unexpected things that we have to kind of, you know, our tax levy limit this year went high, and the board may decide not to go that high. But very often, the tax levy limit is, can be negative two point oh. So that's, these are the reserves that carry us through those ups and downs.
Okay, I don't think we've ever had, I don't recall ever having an end of, um, we haven't one in this.
But when you have, like,- But when you have like correction in the market and all the buildings start to stop, then those are the times that you will have that.
I just think if we can do that once in a while.
Let me just finish those, Sag Harbor had a point not too long ago, that they had no reserves, at all. We're talking, and so then you're bankrupting the school system. The reason we have a really great Moody Bond rating and we can go out and borrow at such a low rate is because we do have these kind of reserves. So you have to be, it's a really cautionary tale, because we're a municipality and we don't have any other options. We can't like go out and, you know, borrow from a bank, you know, a private person could. So these are the things that keep our bond rating really low.
I think that's a very thoughtful approach. I would add, though, that when, when, the district wasn't bankrupted, but when the funds went low, it was under the unassigned fund balance, where they recommended four percent and it went much lower, it had nothing to do with a fleet replacement fund. And so I echo that, that I, you know, this year, in many board meetings, we've heard that we have so much money and we've added positions, we've given double-digit raises, and if we are swimming in money, we should give it back to the taxpayers, some of it, because they're, you know, we have a district full of taxpayers that are gonna have, not have write-offs anymore for a lot of their taxes.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna pause this, only because this isn't the time or place to have that conversation. I think a great time or place to have that conversation is when we have to decide on that percentage.
Okay, thank you, that's a good point.
Okay, I'm gonna continue on.
Yeah, questions?
So.
You said reserves column on this page, I just wanna clarify, so that means in two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen, we spent approximately four hundred thousand for ERAs. Do we have estimates of what we would be spending this year, or no?
We get, we get notified by the retirement system what they estimate the percentage increase to be, and then based on that, that's how we structure the budget.
And one of the difficult things is like the health insurance, we only find out for six months ahead of time, and then the second half of the year, we were gambling, we don't think it's gonna be.
Okay, so, this worksheet walks you through the very complicated calculation of structuring the tax cap, and it starts off with our current tax levy, which is here, and then the percentage growth factor supplied to us by the state based on how much growth has occurred in Sag Harbor. And I have to tell you, we are the third fastest-growing school district in New York State. When you look at the chart, we've grown tremendously, which is why this number is as high as it is. We add in the pilots, we back out all of our various aid, and then we take out, then we add in the two percent CPI factor that the state supplied us with. We back out the one fifty pilot for eighteen nineteen, the capital tax levy money, the building aid we back out. And when we're done, and this is all calculated for me through the state's formulation system, we came up with a maximum tax levy of, well, the number's the thirty-seven million, seven forty-eight, six forty-six, which is a four point zero two percent increase. So that's what I report to the state.
When you said that we're third fastest growing, based on what?
Based on new construction and renovation reported to the town.
Based on spending?
It's based, it's based on, it's based on development within the school district of new construction that's taxable.
Well, I thought you meant enrollment, so thank you for clarifying.
No, it's not enrollment, it's based on new construction or repairs, renovations.
Third fastest growing, how much money we're spending?
And how much money, how much money is being spent in our school district.
Well, I wouldn't make that the headline of our budget memo that we're gonna have. In terms of our enrollment, though, because we've seen an increase in our enrollment because of Sagaponic and Wayne Scott and other districts, you know, we've had a nice little tick-up in that, right? In terms of tuition, our tuition student number.
We're holding stable.
So even after we added them, we haven't seen a big up increase?
We're, we're holding stable.
Enrollment, I think it's definitely enrollment, like incoming kindergarten students.
Yeah, I was asking about the tuition, when we first decided we would take tuition, and now we've added other districts and given them, and they have now had choice. I would think our numbers would've got up then, right, because now, you know, it doesn't cost parents money.
But I don't wanna get caught in the weeds with enrollment right now, only because we've got a budget presentation, so I just wanna stay on point, thank you.
Thank you.
Can we get enrollment for a future budget presentation?
Certainly.
Thank you.
Okay, this chart walks you through the town of East Hampton and the town of Southampton, where Sag Harbor sits, in both, and it's charted out from thirteen fourteen to proposed in eighteen nineteen. And what it does, we take, in East Hampton, their equalization rate is a little bit different than Southampton's, and I have a slide I'm gonna show you momentarily about explaining the equalization rate. So, in Southampton, to give you an example, if we go with a four point zero two percent increase, which is our maximum tax cap, how that impacts the taxpayers in both towns. And based on the town of East Hampton in yellow, per, for every home that's worth one million, one hundred twenty-two thousand, eight hundred and seven dollars, the monthly impact for that home is seventeen dollars and ninety-seven cents. And in the town of Southampton, for a home assessed at a million dollars, it comes to sixteen dollars and one cent per month.
Increase per month.
Increase.
Increase per million, so that's two hundred dollars a year.
That's correct.
Per million dollar.
That's correct.
And that's a big read of four percent, it may be lower.
Right, well, that's based on what the district is entitled to as a maximum right now. The next slide explains what this equalization rate is, and I put it in mainly for the benefit of the audience and the community. And if you noticed in the previous slide, in East Hampton, the equalization rate is different. It's currently fifty-seven percent, and in Southampton, it's a hundred percent. So, it's, the state's measure, here, we'll go back to this other slide, of the municipality's level of assessment, it's a ratio that they, they ratio against the assessed value to the market value, and they come up with an equalization rate. An equalization rate of a hundred, which is what Southampton has, let's see, so an equalization of a hundred means that the municipality is assessing the property at one hundred percent of the market value, which is what Southampton's doing. Therefore, a house in the town of Southampton assessed at a million has an estimated market value of one million dollars. So it's one for one, or dollar for dollar. An equalization rate of less than a hundred, let me go back again, like East Hampton has, okay? Their equalization rate for next year's fifty-seven, or point five seven, go back, okay? Means that the municipality's total market value is greater than its assessed value, as it is with the town of East Hampton. Therefore, a town of East Hampton home assessed at six thousand, four hundred dollars has an estimated market value of one million, one twenty-two, eight oh-seven. So there would be no need for equalization if municipalities or properties were all assessed at one hundred percent. So, and that's one of the things I think they're trying to gear to, but all the different towns are assessed differently, so I just wanted to explain for the public's benefit how this equalization rate works.
Before we move forward, can you go back to slide twenty-two? I just have a question about it. In the town of Southampton, and the majority of our school district is in the town of Southampton.
Yes.
For the past four years, there was a negative monthly impact, in fact, the bills went down, right?
That was in seventeen, sixteen seventeen.
Right, but it looks like it was every year, for four years, right?
Yep, that's, yep, it was, yep, going back to, actually, if you go all the way back fourteen fifteen, that's when I was tracking it.
Right, so, so this would be the first, this will most likely be the first time that the taxes have gone up in years. Is that partially because of the STAR program, or this doesn't take into account that STAR program? Because then they also got rebates to the STAR program, so the impact will even be more this year because they've restricted those STAR program rebates now.
That's true, yes.
But just because your rates went down doesn't actually mean the number you pay has gone down. I know that sounds weird, but because they were, they, Southampton parents were reassessing a lot. So it was bumping people's value up, so even if their rate goes down, their value goes up, their taxes actually go up. No, I know that, but, I mean, when they reassessed, but a lot of people were not reassessed.
And a lot of people were.
Yeah, no, I know that, but they, but, you know, we heard, we heard that many, many people, their tax, their bills went down last year, and then, you know, a couple of years ago, they were also getting the STAR rebate, which has now gone away.
Can we hold the discussion until it's time, we don't have to make that decision tonight?
Yeah, we took junior high, and health schoolers that are here just.
This slide shows you.
We don't need to discuss every point on every slide, but let's let him get through the information first.
So I created three additional scenarios for the board's pleasure. This first one is scenario one, what does a two percent increase look like? So as you know, our maximum tax cap that I submitted to the state is four point zero two percent. So, if I take this number, which is the variable, and I change that to zero, make it flat, just keep it zero, with the growth factor we've had in Sag Harbor, our tax, our allowable tax levy becomes actually two point zero seven three one percent. So, the tax levy becomes thirty-seven million, zero four one, which is this number right here. So you have, so I had talked with Superintendent Graves, and I said, let me give you like three scenarios to take a look, a low end, a middle, and a high type of thing. This next one shows you what it looks like if your tax levy is three point five percent, three point five zero six two to be exact. And in that case, I changed the variable to one point zero one four seven percent here, from two percent, I dropped it down. And that gives you a tax levy of thirty-seven million, five sixty-one, one forty, and your tax levy again is three point five zero six two percent, three point five one. The next scenario, I made it at three point nine nine percent, just under four. So it's actually, mathematically, it's three point nine nine three seven percent. And that number is one point zero one nine seven, that's about as close as I could get it, okay? And that gives you a tax levy of thirty-seven million, seven thirty-eight, zero three three. So, and we're almost done.
We gave you four scenarios, four scenarios.
Well, the fourth scenario, you're right, you are right.
Limited choices.
The fourth one goes back to what you saw originally. Your fourth one is really your first one, it's your four point zero two percent, which is your maximum tax levy. And again, that's a two percent increase, which is here, your tax levy is thirty-seven million, seven forty-eight, which is here, there's your four point zero two. Here's your budget calendar coming up, so our next presentation is March the twenty-sixth. I need back again to talk about the tax levy limit some more, the tax levy impact. We're gonna present the elementary school, and then the middle high school, and then April eighteenth, be a busy night, budget workshop. We've got the BOSI's vote and election, we're gonna look at special ed, debt service. You adopt the eighteen nineteen operating budget that night, you adopt the property tax report card that night, be an action pack night, okay?
Dr. Kendra, when do we need to make a decision on the rate, the percent?
You have, anytime between now and April eighteenth.
So we need to have, have a vote on the decision by the eighteenth?
You do.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So you've got some time. I wanna thank you all very much, it's really good fun.
And I wanna really thank, and, you know, I apologize if I seem reluctant on giving all the line items we're used to, because Phil has been learning and doing his job and holding our substantial budget, so if I, it's in protection of him because he's doing such a wonderful job.
Thank you.
And I miss Jennifer Bushamy so much, but I have also come to really respect him in getting to know our cafeteria, our transportation department, our business offices, and also building your budget.
And facilities.
And facilities, oh, sorry, facilities, and also safety, because he had to learn that at rocket speed last, in the last two weeks. So I really congratulate him and, you know, forgive you if I seem a little protective, and I, he will be here to answer every question, I just wanna make sure we.
We keep him.
Well, I just wanna say. I enjoyed my time.
In a while.
Thank you very much. Can I make a suggestion for the next budget presentation? Because I know this year, we consolidated, and several of the meetings were covering more in each session, because we had, we eliminated a few of these meetings. Typically, the elementary and middle school budgets take a bit of time to go through, so perhaps the regular business meeting should start at eight, so we have enough time? Because we don't wanna be rushed through this, it's really, really important, and we've, like I said, we've eliminated several prep meetings going through this.
Well, Chris, I agree with you, but, but just, I think the reason we did that is because Phil joined us later in the year.
No, no, I'm not saying that we, what I'm, so that's why I'm suggesting to allocate enough time for the next budget meeting, so we can really go through it, versus, you know, keeping people waiting, because this is our opportunity to publicly ask these questions, which is really important, so that's my suggestion.
Any other questions on the budget? All right, let's take a short break while people file in, and then we'll. Good evening, everybody. Welcome, welcome. Tonight's educational meeting will start with public input one. Public comment is limited to three minutes. Comments need to be directed to the board president. Keep in mind that the board will listen, may discuss, but not necessarily, and may not necessarily respond. Please do not discuss personnel or individual students, and note that you are being recorded. And as you come up, please state your name for the cameras, would anybody like to speak at public input one? Come on up.
I guess I'm first.
Welcome up.
Right over there, Helen.
There's the podium.
So, hi, everyone. My name's Helen Roussel, and I started an organization called Dyslexic, is everybody here? Dyslexic Action Group, because I found it really difficult to help, to get help for a child, my child who would have dyslexia, who has dyslexia. Having said that, you know, I'm really amazed and very grateful for the really brilliant help that we've had at this school. It's been really, really great, really great help with dyslexia, and, you know, and I can't, you know, I have got nothing, it's all very positive and amazing, and it is amazing how you guys can really work, when you put your mind to it, and, you know, everything gets that out, you know what to do, you just go for it, and it works, it's brilliant. Having said that, I started, I made a website, and I started this organization, and I went to DC and everything else, and loads of folks from this school, because they, you know, live here, have been contacted. I haven't reached out to anyone, they've come to me, and they've said that they find it really difficult to get their child help, and a lot of them are saying that their children are a year or more below grade level reading. And if anybody, I mean, the packet I sent out, you know, I just gave out, it explains what dyslexia is and everything. And bear in mind that a school district really close from here, they'd never even heard of it. I mean, so we were at ground level when we started on this. They said, I've never heard of dyslexia, what do we do? That's what they said to me, and here too, there was no trained teachers, even though when I came, I was told there was, there was nobody trained for, to help somebody with dyslexia. But that all changed, and it's fantastic, it's been really phenomenal, and so many kids are getting help now, it's really wonderful. So, I just wanna suggest, because there's been so many parents coming to me, that there's more screening, that the screening happens, you know, at second grade level, sorry, at kindergarten level, at second grade level, fifth grade level. sorry, at kindergarten level, at second grade level, fifth grade level. And the school psychologist is trained for, for me, to evaluate for dyslexia, because the school psychiatrist isn't, so psychologist isn't. And parents have to spend thousands going outside of school, and it's very difficult, you know, to have an evaluation. And I've heard all kinds of stories from people about trying to get evaluations. And, and also, it's really difficult for a child who doesn't have an IEP to get any kind of help. I mean, I've struggled with it myself, you know, and with a student who doesn't have an IEP. And also, some of the programs we have, because we have really good programs in this school now, and some of them are not sort of administered as mandated. So basically, instead of giving a child, oh, God. Anyway, you've, you've got the stuff, and the main thing is, the screenings, evaluations, the teachers are trained, but they're not, they're not teaching the students. There's not enough time. There's a group, I'll just finish with this. There's a group of students who are behind in their reading, and you'll see stuff here about whole language versus phonics, that big war that you probably know a lot about. Well, the, the, there's apparently a class that meets every day at eight o'clock, and they're asked to read. So they're asked to do something that, that basically they, they find really difficult to do. So instead of asking them to sit there and read something they really struggle with, why not give them somebody trained to teach them phonics? Instead of having those poor kids drag themselves in eight o'clock every morning, I can't believe, it's sort of, it sounds like torture to me. They're made to do something that they can't do properly, hence, they, you know, they don't like reading. Of course, they don't like reading, but it's too difficult. Anyway, there's loads of stuff, there's loads of, there's a whole list of stuff that I gave you, and they're, they're very loud complaints that haven't gone away. Otherwise, I wouldn't be here, because the last thing I want to do is come in here, because I've been so pleased, you know? The last thing I want to do here is come and sort of complain about it. But it really needs attention. Three out of four people, 20% of the community have dyslexia. Three out of four people on welfare can't read. I was just reading an article, 80% of people in prison in Texas are functioning illiterate. It means they can't read anything, seven to 80%.
If you want to come up after everybody else is done, you're certainly welcome to.
Yeah, no, I just wanted to give you some statistics, because I forgot.
We know, Helen, we're, we're big fans of yours.
Thank you, Helen, thank you. Anybody else like to come up for public input one? Come on up.
My name is Patricia Moyer. I have four children within the Sag Harbor School District, one who is special needs. I'm also here for the special education part tonight. I hope, I also want everyone to know that I speak with experience. I have 17 years as an educator, an early childhood educator, so hopefully that gives credence to what I'm going to say tonight. In 2015, Sag Harbor Elementary School decided it would start a self-contained classroom. They were inviting the special needs children of the district home. That was what they said, they invited us home. I'm here today because of the difficulties that I've had within the district and the struggles that I've had. But also, I'm not alone. I'm here with a number of people tonight with similar stories. We've reached out to the principal, the superintendent, and even the board. You can see by the letters there, we sent a letter to the board last year. We had a meeting, a group of us had a meeting with the superintendent about, the agenda is there, about the things that we would like to see within this, within the classrooms and within the school. So last year, myself and 11 other parents sent a letter to the board asking for help with the special education services at Sag Harbor Elementary School. We received a reply from only two members saying they would look into this, and that was the last that we've heard. I'm here tonight to implore the board to look at the quality of the special education services of our neediest students. Talking about training, training is the key. Other districts, including my own district, provide training in crisis intervention training, best educational practices. Throughout the decades of research, the field of behavior analysis has developed many techniques for increasing useful behaviors and reducing those that cause harm or interfere with learning. ABA is a widely recognized, and it is a safe and effective treatment for students with autism, which is what my daughter has. It has been endorsed by a number of state and federal agencies, including the U.S. Surgeon General and the New York State Health Department. I would like to just let everyone know that the school district has purchased a training program called Relias Academy last year, only to wind up not using it, because the person who was supposed to administer it was let go by the district. These are our children. I know the public forum is not for individual cases, but I would love the opportunity to sit down and share my story with you, as well as the other parents who are struggling within this district. Thank you.
Anybody else for public input one? Come on up.
My name is Jeannie Edgerton Warburton. I'm a resident of Watermill. I have a blended family of five children. I have a master's of science in education from Bang Street College of Education. I taught for nine years in Manhattan. My youngest child is severely autistic. He has a severe syndrome called ADMP, which is a neurodevelopmental disorder that affects 156 human beings in the world. My husband and I were thinking about relocating to Sag Harbor to put a bid on a house here. We looked at Pearson. We were beyond impressed with the school. We think it's a fantastic school, but we were not overly impressed with the special needs classroom. It is certainly not appropriate for our son's needs. He's in an intense ABA-based program, home-based program in Southampton. I have to say that we were told that you may consider having him remain in a home-based program, so we were very pleased with that consideration from Sag Harbor. But we were very dismayed to find out that if we were to consider making a move and putting a bid in on a house for our family, as we have to consider four other children in our family, that we were not allowed to use our current ABA providers that were, that are working with him. One's a BCA provider, the other one's an ABA provider. And that we would have to consider possibly having other ABA services in our homes. And for full transparency, it's very hard to find providers that will stick with families for a long period of time, because we are on eastern Long Island, and we have many providers coming from mid Long Island. That was very discouraging. I, I think the school's fantastic for probably high-functioning kids on the spectrum, but for the neediest children and the children that are completely non-verbal in diapers, it's not the most suitable classrooms for these children. I know that we had looked into the Gersh Academy, or the Gersh Academy had looked into buying CDCH, it was turned down by many of the superintendents here. This is something that I've now gone to Congressman Lee Zeldin about, and I'm not going to stop the fight. I feel very strongly, as a parent and a parent advocate for all children who are very low functioning in the spectrum, that many of these schools just aren't suitable. And it's not that they're not, they're fantastic schools, but for the kids that are really, really in need of that special ABA intensive service, they're just not going to receive it in any of these districts. So this is not just me coming up and saying Sag Harbor. I feel passionately that they're not going to get it in any of the other schools. So really, my purpose is to say that this is a problem that is not going away. These children have an opportunity to live a fulfilled life, and they're not going to, they shouldn't, parents shouldn't have to move out of the Hamptons because their kids' needs can't be met. So it's something that we have to really look into as a community in helping kids, perhaps in a special needs school. So that was my presentation.
Thank you.
Take into consideration. Thank you.
Anybody else for public input one? Come on up.
Good evening. Hello, my name is Julian Barakliff. I'm the father of Miles, who's in sixth grade and having a fantastic time. So first of all, thank you for that, you're having a great experience. And that's a good thing. We are also, though, that's, my wife is over there, we're also the parents of three and a half-year-old twins, one of whom has autism. And I will say that, you know, we had a tricky experience on our arrival, when we were quite shocked that it was suggested to us that we take him to a place called Alternatives in Southampton, and went and visited it, and found that they don't actually offer the basic therapeutic programs that are recognized as being effective for autistic children. So the East End in general, as this seems to have this pattern that Jeannie was starting to describe, of, you know, sending kids to facilities that are just not doing anything for them, aren't able to do anything for them. And that's a big problem. And, you know, after our own issue with that, we, we felt that the only answer for us was to, a great deal of blood, sweat, and tears, mainly Beth, put together, cobble together an at-home program of therapists for our son. He's three and a half now, as I said. And then gradually, you know, as the new arrivals, as the newbies, we got to know other families out here of special needs kids. And, and the pattern became apparent. And, and it's, it's, it's a really concerning thing. Jeannie mentioned the example recently of Gersh Academy's looking to come out here and take over the CDCH building. I know there are technical issues with that, 501(c)(3), not 501(c)(3). But my comment on that particular thing would just be that when, when Gersh mooted the idea of coming out here, the, the schools collectively on the East End said, there's no need for any specialist facility out here. Essentially, they said, you know, we've got this, and it's unnecessary. I just want to make the point that, as forcibly as I can, that in its current state, nobody out here's got this, not this school or any of the other schools on the East End. There's a real problem here. And, you know, I'm not moving out here and asking for some kind of, you know, platinum quality, world, world-beating system. I, I think, certainly relative to the rest of Long Island, there are 25 specialist autism schools spread out along Long Island, the rest of Long Island, but not on the East End, which work with the local schools. For example, you know, there are many kids who, you know, can benefit from being in the programs here, but some kids need specialist attention first to get them functional enough to then be brought into the regular school system, albeit with all kinds of assistance. So I'm not asking for, you know, something gold-plated and unusual here. I think that, you know, I think the East End needs to work to try and raise its game unfortunately to average in terms of the rest of Long Island. It's a very pressing issue. And I just wanted to mention, you know, I may be wrong in this, I'm not an expert, but I did a quick back of an envelope to think about this. And as I understand it, very, very roughly, if you have, you know, a special needs kid in, in a program out here in the school system, it's order of magnitude of $50,000 a year issue. The real problem is that if you don't get them the aggressive interventional therapies that they leave at a very early stage, they turn into a time bomb. Because from about the age of 14, if they don't become sufficiently functional, they end up in a residential facility. And then they become a $220,000 a year problem. And the school system is responsible for them until they're 21 years old, which means each kid that doesn't make it up and over the functional hurdle sufficient to not have to go into residential facility becomes a one and a half million dollar problem for the school. And it's fairly easy to have half a dozen of them slip through the system, and in no time at all, you've got a $10 million problem. And, and I think that in its, in its current form, the situation out here, you know, there's been a tremendous increase in the number of kids diagnosed with autism. We all know that some of that is because people diagnose more, but even, even normalizing the data and everything else, this is a seriously growing problem. It's one in 68 children now. And there is, there is a time bomb effect sitting here. If we, if we, if we can't get on them, you know, really keenly, really early, and with the highest quality game that we can bring, it will, to use the vernacular, come around and bite us in the ass much bigger later on. So that's my, three minutes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else for public input one? Come on up.
Good evening. My name's Thomas Moyer. I know my wife gave a family background, so I'm not going to harp on that any longer. But I would just like to ask the board to look into the transparency of their special education program at the elementary school. We send our children to school every day with the idea that if something serious happens, we will be notified in a timely manner. I know my daughter lacks a voice, as do other children in the school and the program, and do not have the ability to tell us how their day went, and what happened to them, or what their needs are, or if they are being met. And I know the district opens its doors to the children who may not be able to communicate, and we fully, I'm sorry, and we engage in a fruitful communication with Emily's teachers this year, but information has not been forthcoming to us in the past. And interventions are a vital part of our special education program. Our parents are often the last to know about incidents that happen within the district. And the district has not been forthcoming to, to information about my daughter, and is remiss about filling out incident reports. And I'm requesting that the school start a program to have incident reports written and filed and sent home to the parents. And I look forward to speaking with you on this parlay that cares to address it. Thank you.
Anybody else for public input one? Come on up. Oh, wait, let me know if you've got.
Oh, go ahead, go ahead. Hi, I'm Kate Lawton. I just wanted to say that I'm so touched by the parents that have come before me, and I feel a little embarrassed to change the gears here. Thank you for the safety conversation we had last Thursday night. I was really impressed with it. I was happy to see what the district is doing, the changes that you're making, and I also felt, I felt really good about how you were able to identify some boundaries about what you could and couldn't do. So that felt great to me. That said, it seems like the video's been edited.
We're going to, we're going to pause the clock, only because that came to our attention this afternoon, and we looked into it, so do you want to? Yeah, did you get my email?
I, I did.
So, no, so what happened was, we had a video card that, that, that takes, that records, and we're not sure. We had a wonderful student that was running it, because our tech director was up front, and we're down a person in our tech department, and so we're not sure if the video card had run out and he wasn't aware of it, or if the camera just got shut off, we're not sure which. So it feels like the Nixon era, where it was a pausing.
A wee bit?
It felt terrible. It just felt terrible. So he had handed the, the two discs over to Mr. Fisher to download, who just downloaded them, assuming they had everything. And there was a missing block of almost an hour. So that was, that was very sad for us. And he went back, Mr. Fisher went back and looked, and there's still a missing block of an hour.
So it's gone?
Yeah.
Swah, huh?
Yeah. So either the camera got turned off, or the card had gotten overloaded, and he hadn't recognized it, and he's wonderful.
So did anybody do like a download, you know, like this?
The press report.
Oh, the press was there, right. Okay, great. So you'll have a list of people that did ask questions, because some of the block that was missing, or some of the stuff that was missing, they were really, could important impact?
I was going to reach out, because a couple of parents had said that they had taped it. So if I have, if I can get a parent's transcript of it, we'll, we'll upload that.
I just want to make sure that it's all cleared up, and that we're on the, because it's a little, yes.
Yeah, it feels like the Nixon era, where there was a missing. And people really did think, we never edit anything. We never edit anything.
Well, mistakes are made, but I just want, the ways.
And it's wonderful, because we can so easily tape everything, and that, and that's how we set that auditorium up, so that we could tape everything.
So you'll have a sort of an answer about this?
We're going to announce it tonight, and.
I was, I was cut out with you, so.
Oh, I knew you were. You had a lot of information.
And we have, we have a, we have a tape running over the video now on the website saying.
So if anybody has the missing hour, please send it in.
Definitely, there should be a disclaimer on it, because it seems.
Yeah, there is a disclaimer.
So can you add a disclaimer, because it wasn't on our page?
I did. It was on right now. Mr. Fisher had. Yeah.
So our, accept our apologies. Thank you. Gretchen, come on up.
I'm Gretchen Comley, and my daughter is in fifth grade, and my son is in second. I'm here to talk about improving the security after Parkland. I'm here to talk about improving the security after Parkland. Some of the nearby schools have taken steps to improve their existing security systems following the Parkland shootings. What measure will Sag Harbor take to improve the security? And I did attend the meeting last week, but I have some questions. Southampton School has been getting high marks in our district, but as well as the state, and I did some research and spoke to a number of superintendent's offices in East Hampton, West Hampton, and Southampton Schools, and they had several key points that I would like to bring to your attention. First of all, teachers are currently being trained not only to quiet children during lockdowns, but they are also being encouraged to push tables against the doors during lockdowns, and they're also being encouraged to purchase other implements to put against the doors. Teachers are also being trained at the importance and seriousness of securing classrooms and perimeters. Active shooters average about five minutes during shootings, and they've been taking that into consideration when they've been increasing security protocol. Shooters will target windows as well, and there's been a number of articles about that, and we don't have secure windows. In all cases of school shooting, shooters that enter the schools are able to do the most damage from the inside. In Rancho Tahaema School in California, an elementary school was spared when the shooter armed with an AR-15 semi-automatic weapon was unable to enter the building because the school secretary heard shots and administered a lockdown, but no children were killed and only three were injured. It is much different case, as everyone knows, in Parkland. Since I've been sort of examining this whole issue, I've been noticing teachers propping open doors in the elementary school, even though there's a system that actually monitors this, it's still happening. Doors are blowing open, and the doors don't automatically shut if you press a button. There's no button, so you have to actually physically send a person to shut it. Parents are holding doors open for other parents when they're exiting the school during morning program, and also the glass in the gym is not bulletproof, and the doors do not automatically close, which I just said. Morning program at Pearson has several unmanned entry points in the morning. Southampton School has moved to a single point of entry. So what I'm asking for is gated or glass-enclosed entry points or a single point of entry, which is what all of the schools are saying is the most important way to control a shooter. Bulletproof doors in vulnerable areas, interior locks in every classroom, and then there's the just-in-case implements that people have been putting against doors, training session for school administrators, security guards to monitor the morning program, and then potentially police officers that are like just like a minute away to come and sit in front of the school during morning program because it's such a dangerous situation. And then also, there's also a problem with the radios.
Gretchen, because your three minutes is up, I'm going to ask that if after public input one and everybody else has had a chance to speak, you can come right on up and finish. Is that okay?
Yeah. I was done.
Are you sure?
It was just radios. Because none of the radios that anyone has are consistently working, and I've been told by several security guards and other people that they don't work.
Perfect. Thank you so much. We appreciate the information.
Thank you.
Anybody else for public input one?
Can I just, I mean, we heard it from a lot of parents on the issue of the special needs students. I think it might be a good idea if we could put that as an agenda item in one of our upcoming meetings so that we can just have a full discussion about that, whether we're doing everything we can for our special needs students, and we can notice it, and if everyone wants to come with them, I think that'd be a good idea.
I think my only concern is the privacy of the students, so let's vet that thoroughly, but I think it's a great idea. We might have to think about what type of format that might be so that we can speak freely.
Sure.
But it's a great point.
I would echo, I think that having a public discussion, at least in general, about the program is important, because there are some kind of big bucket ideas that were put out there that we need to, who we require to discuss.
Anybody else for public input one? Is that it?
Can I make another comment about what will be heard tonight? And I just want to say that if anyone emails the board and you don't hear back from every board member, please know that the protocol that's been established is the only person who responds based on the board is the board president. So it's not that we don't hear you or we don't think it's important, it's that that is not what the board process is. But know that, and I'm sure that we all read all of your emails, and we very much care about your concerns.
Thank you very much. Let's move on to the superintendent's report. And then I'm just going to remind the board that there's a couple of different phases of the superintendent's report, and we'll just save our questions for the end of each phase, so like, the first part is student council development, and we'll just hold our questions till the end.
I was, yeah. I was just going to say, move the kids up. The kids are up.
Yep, kids are up.
But I had a couple, just coil quick things on, because I know I've got students that are very interested in this topic. School's closed! No, no, it's not. Potential weather for Tuesday, March 13th, currently calls for seven to 12 inches of snow on the east end of Long Island. The decision to delay or close will be made tomorrow at 4:30 in the morning. 4:30 in the morning.
They're not calling people's houses at 4:30.
I call my teachers at 4:30, because I, yeah. Kids' call comes around six.
I heard it down, or three to five.
I heard 20, so we're not going to... So 4:30 in the morning. I got milk and bread.
Parents get called.
Take me up to the teachers' office.
My name is Jim Kinnear. I'm the student council advisor in the high school. And these four students will introduce themselves.
Hi, I'm Peyton Yardley. I'm a senior, and I am the student council president.
My name's Sinead Murray. I'm also a senior, and I'm the student council treasurer.
My name's Alan Neve, and I am the president of the junior class.
I'm Emily Hallick, and I'm the junior class treasurer.
We're here to present on the progress the student council has made this year, and the students are going to each take a bit of what we've done, and then we'll wrap it up.
So I'll start off and just explain the goals of our program this year and how we've changed. So as you guys know, Mr. Kinnear is new, and he's been great. He's been fantastic. He's been everything I could ask of him.
They're $20s for us.
And he's really allowed us to grow personally and individually, which is something super important to me, because like Sinead, I'm going off to college, and I don't know what I want to do, but I know that the basis that he has set for me will help me continue on throughout my entire life. So with this said, to keep leadership, we meet every other week during lunch, and sometimes it's a 20-minute meeting, sometimes it takes multiple meetings to get across what we want. And a key objective is, even though I'm leaving in four months and I only have this rule, not a rule, but oversee over everyone for a year, I know, it's bad wording there, I know that what we are establishing now will continue on, and these two ladies will carry on. And we've, one key thing that he's brought up to me is, to make a good leader, you have to listen to everyone. So although we are elective officials, this is something I want more people in the school community to get involved. So the basis of our program is rather to get the whole student opinion, rather than just the core four people that are elected, because I know that it's a little selective, and you don't hear everyone's opinion, and there's so many different ideas. So that's something that's definitely being taken into consideration, and I want to get that across, that it's something really important for us. We have instituted the Robert's Rule of Order, and all of our meetings are also very formal, and everything is done in a formal manner, because we know that this is important and it will carry on forever. And something that we want to do is look into other schools' student council, because we are new and there's changes taking place. One idea is to visit West Hampton Beach's high school and see how they're performing and how they do their thing, because I don't know how other schools do it. I just try to do the best I can, but input from others is definitely great, and input from Mr. Kinnear has also been awesome. So I have the rest of them, they're going to talk about some more specific things that they have done with our program.
So about a month ago, Mr. Kinnear opened up during one of our meetings, and he said, after we had done what we had to do and passed all the fundraisers and signed all the sheets, he said, "Is there anything that anybody thinks is particularly important that's going on that you want to touch on with just the student council, something that we can all learn together, kind of a community learning thing with Just R, about 20 students?" And I had heard through, I'm part of Pier, Progressive East End Reformers Group, which is Pier, and so like you follow Facebook, and they do a lot of, they give you updates on what's going on, and I had read that Tarana Burke was coming this up to Stony Brook to do a forum about her movement, Me Too, hashtag Me Too. And so I brought it up. Nobody really had anything that was like very pressing, and that was about in two weeks. And so I brought it up to Mr. Kinnear, and I said, "Look, this is really cool. I think the majority of our student council is female, which is super important, Peyton and I, and Natalie and Ava, who are our vice president and secretary, all going to college, and sexual abuse in colleges is so huge and so much of a tragedy, and it's really freaking scary." But so, as Tarana Burke is going through this, and she's doing Me Too, and it's an hour and a half away, I figured, well, I'm going no matter what, whether or not student council wants to come or not, I'm going. So Mr. Kinnear and I, we sat down, we talked about how we could get a bus. I ended up going on myself just because I have prior engagements, and so we went to this thing, and it was so amazing. And I think I brought back a lot of what she said about how to respect for yourself and to know your limits, and to, if something's wrong and you know it's wrong, then it's wrong, and that's that. And I think that after we did the Me Too event, we brought back so many important things that I share with my friends every day, especially my female friends and my male friends as well, because, you know, it takes two to tango, I guess, it's a multi-pass factor to do. And so after doing that, I'm really glad we had the opportunity to do that, which wasn't really something that was a fundraiser, wasn't really something that was, you know, a normal field trip. And so thank you, Mr. Kinnear, for letting us do that. Very cool. I'm not sure we would have been able to do that in any other way.
And I think just to clarify on that, it was opened up to any students within the high school who did want to go, not just student council.
Right. And we had lots of kids who came that worked for student council as well.
Okay, so I'm just going to talk a little bit about student organized protests, which hasn't actually been really a topic of interest in the past, but this year, it's definitely something that we're all talking about, and we're all kind of wondering what's going to happen. I'm going to focus on the March 14th walkout, and Emily's going to focus on the other dates that we're talking about in the future. So the walkout was something that I saw a lot going on on social media in terms of just the Sag Harbor and maybe like East Hampton community. It was, there was a lot of different groups in the school, not necessarily united, not necessarily communicating with each other, that were discussing it, and there was a lot of kind of ideas and plans being thrown around, which is great, but it's really important that we have, if we're going to organize, that we have a united student body. So we brought it up in the next student council meeting that we had. We kind of called a meeting right after February break, which is maybe, you know, really soon after the Parkland shooting, and we had a meeting, basically just discussing plans for organized student protests, how it could be all-inclusive, how it could be safe, and how we could execute something that I think a lot of students in Pearson were very interested in, in a safe and respectful manner, that wouldn't disrupt the school day, but that would kind of get all of our interest and make our voices heard. We ended up deciding an itinerary for March 14th at 10 o'clock. There's actually a poster that I made, I just put them up before this meeting, so they're all over the school. We're also going to hand them out on Wednesday morning. There's like little handouts. We're going to have 10 o'clock, go to your fourth period classes. We're encouraging the high schoolers, we have no jurisdiction over the middle school, student council, or student body, just to be clear. So we don't really have as much responsibility to that, but we definitely encourage them to kind of organize themselves in any manner that they see fit. Fourth period, 10 o'clock, we encourage students that are interested in walking out. Nobody is being pressured or forced to, to leave their classes and walk quietly and peacefully outside to Pearson Hill, and stand outside for 17 minutes, and then we're going to go back inside. And that's going to be Wednesday, hopefully. And there's also going to be a collection passed around for the families of the victims. So that's kind of the consensus that we came to in student council, and I'm really proud of us as a group for being able to come to this decision. There was a PTSA meeting that was held last week. Mr. Nichols came, and I'm really grateful for Mr. Nichols offering his input and his wisdom on the subject, and for actually kind of participating in student council decisions and talking to us about it as well. So we had presence at the PTSA meeting, we kind of informed the PTSA what was going on, they offered their help to us if we needed it. It's been a great process, and I hope that this Wednesday, everything goes smoothly, and we can kind of organize ourselves as a student body. Thank you. That's, that's it.
So the next upcoming date after March 14th is March 24th with the March for Our Lives. And so we have three different main groups. Some people are very interested in going to Washington DC to march there. Other people are interested in going into the city and marching there as well. But for people who don't necessarily have the means to travel, or who want to have something more local, we have explored the idea of creating our own march here in Sag Harbor that the student council would like to organize, based on student, Nichols would like to do it. So we are in the process of organizing something with that, and we would love the support of everyone in the community. And then on April 20th, on the anniversary of the Columbine shooting, we would like to do a, almost like a forum in which we discuss the issues that the students feel are most pressing in terms of school safety, which a big topic that we've talked about in our meetings is not just focusing on physical security in terms of locking the doors and having the security guards, but also focusing on the mental health of students and how we can kind of prevent problems from occurring. So we've discussed taking surveys and asking the students what they are most passionate about, as well as we would like to explore options of bringing in different speakers who are experts and can help speak to the different issues. So more information will come with that.
One thing, Mr. Nichols and I have talked for several years, actually, about leadership development, that's always been very important to me, and it is something that I've wanted to instill, excuse me, in the students. And one avenue is the seven habits of highly effective people, that's something that I find very, very important. And so I've wanted to do that this year, but the different events that have come up have sort of delayed it, but it's been, I think, appropriate, and I do think we'll get to it. But in the future, my hope is to do some leadership development. Before the school year, I took over sometime in September, October, whatever it was. So sort of catching up from behind, but in the future, that's definitely a goal of mine. Is there any questions from the board?
Any questions? If we have questions about the event on the 14th, should we wait till later or ask now?
Now we're going to check out for that.
Okay. So I have two questions, and they're not necessarily for you, they may be better directed towards the superintendent or her cabinet. But one, are, will there be any penalty in the classroom if students participate at 10 a.m., meaning will, you know, what happens if they have a test, a quiz, they have something going on there? Are there restrictions around that? And then secondly, will there be, you know, security with those children on the hill? Those are my two questions.
So I'm going to put out a memorandum to the staff tomorrow, making them aware that it's 10 o'clock on Wednesday, and that not to issue any tests or other assessments during that timeframe. Students will not be disciplined for participating in the walkout. In terms of security, upon learning from Miss Yardley that this was going to happen on the 14th, I contacted the chief of police, who is sending several police officers up during that timeframe.
Interesting. And I want to say, you're all incredibly impressive and very poised, so I'm blown away.
Also, just building on top of, like, if there's going to be any repercussions and stuff, I know Peyton and I are college bound and have dealt with college applications, and nearly every, I mean, I applied to 16 schools, because I'm insane, but nearly every single one said that we will not be regarding your disciplinary actions. I know we're not having it, but in case you know kids who are going to other schools, that lots of colleges are sending out that we will not be... that lots of colleges are sending out that we will not be, you know, judging you on fact that you participate in peaceful protests. So if that's, if you have kids that are college bound, it's important to check on that to make sure that the colleges that your kids are interested in will respect that and not penalize you for that.
And if you read what the students have written, it's really beautifully, like I worry about their safety, but I think we're going to have teachers that'll also step in to, you know, look over the students. But what they have written is really self-policing. They're like, this is important, what we're doing is for a really good reason. So it's not just a chance to step out of class. So if you read what they've written, they've made it very heartfelt, so.
Did you have a question or comment?
I just am concerned about us opening the door to other political issues that you may not feel as warmly about. And understand that you're putting yourself in the place now that some other students choose to protest something, they're not going to be, they're not going to be charged as well. But it's being handled, even handled, even handed, especially when we're dealing with politics.
I had read that piece from the School Boards Association and received some similar guidance from some other organizations. What we're doing is somewhat consistent in many ways with other schools that I've spoken to. Other schools have actually taken more steps in terms of actually setting aside time during the day and altering their bell schedule. We chose not to do that, but I think you raise a legitimate concern, I'm aware of it. But this is what we chose to do.
Go ahead.
I'd just like to say that is a very legitimate concern and I completely understand where you're coming from. One of the aspects that I didn't mention when I was talking about the walkout is it is on the anniversary of the Parkland shooting. And one of the kind of centralizing aspects, since this is happening all over the nation, is that it is being considered almost standing in solitude with the victims of the shooting. So kind of our view as a student council, because obviously if we're representing the student body, we can't just take one political point of view and kind of expect everybody to follow in something that we're organizing. But our point of view is that crossing whatever your political views are or whatever your views about maybe gun control or mental health issues, anything like that that's come up in these discussions following the Parkland shooting, that isn't necessarily relevant. We're trying to kind of memorialize these victims of this problem that is affecting public schools all over the country. None of those victims, maybe all of them didn't share the same political views and all of them, you know, it was regardless of who they were, they were put in danger and killed because of this very pressing problem that affects us as students. Today, a student in my class came up to me, shares very different political views from me and this was really surprising. He said, "Ella, I actually changed my mind, I'm going to be walking out with you guys on Wednesday. I just wanted to let you know. And if you have anything you need help with, just let me know and I can help you." And it was like, it really touched me. I was like, I was so happy that we've made this very clear, that it's very inclusive and it's more just us coming together as a student body at Pearson. So with that.
Okay, I just have one question. I understand high school and, but what happens when middle school?
They're up next.
Leaves the building.
We will talk about it again in our memo. And we will also let our families know as well, we always, we'll send an email glass tomorrow.
But if a sixth, seventh, or eighth grader would like to participate, are we allowing them to? Am I, should I not say that on camera?
Can I just say that peaceful protest is like protected by the law? However old you are, you can protest peacefully, whether or not your principal says so or not. Like Mr. Nichols has given us his go-ahead and that's great and we appreciate it. But if kids want to walk out, like they can walk out. And if we were told that we couldn't walk out, I would still be walking out.
We still do understand those safety concerns with the younger students, since they are kind of a different student body than we are. So if the administration addressed that in their memorandum then.
Yeah, I don't want to open up a can of worms, but I think that if you did hang up those flyers all over that most sixth, seventh, and eighth graders can read.
Yeah, we're going to address this tomorrow. I hope so. Memorandum that goes to the faculty and probably over loudspeaker as well.
So does that mean you're letting them go?
No, I'm not telling you right now.
You're not telling you right now?
So what I'm doing is, I wasn't in school today, but I've spoken with Miss Yardley, the president of the high school student council, and had a discussion with Mr. Kinnear. I haven't spoken with Ms. Caulfield yet, because I wasn't in school today, I was in the city with my daughter at the doctor, but I do intend to address it first thing tomorrow.
Any other questions for the high school? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, so we are not addressing that right now, but I would like to introduce our middle school student council. It's a much lighter note than what was discussed before. I have Riley Rusell, who's a seventh grader, there are Aubrey, who's a sixth grader, as well as Izzy Kaplan. They're going to go through the slides, I am not talking. So here you go, ladies.
My name is Riley Rusell, I'm a seventh grader and I am the treasurer of the middle school. And in the middle school, we do a lot of character education such as Red Ribbon Week, the Snowflake Tea, and Stick to Love. We do many grade level fundraisers as well as field trip planning, talent shows, and collections. In the middle school, we do Red Ribbon Week. We, in Red Ribbon Week, we create and read aloud the healthy messages of the day over the last week or after the pledge and introduce the Red Ribbon Week assembly with a speech about being healthy. In addition, some people meet with Mrs. Napoli and Mrs. Cariero about various events during the week and help to implement the activities. We act as the leaders of the group. This year, the student council met with the mayor of Sag Harbor. We signed the proclamation and tied red ribbons all around the village.
Hi, I'm Aubrey, sixth grade. So for the Snowflake Tea, the student council goes around and telling middle school kids that they will, they can invite their grandparents to come have snacks and play games with them. And we meet and plan the event with Mrs. Napoli and Mrs. Cariero. And on the day of the event, we line up on the hallways and escort them and greet them down to the cafeteria. For our Stick to Love, student council members plan and conduct an assembly to present to the middle school at an assembly. The Stick to Love campaign is meant to promote positive, healthy relationships among students.
I'm Izzy Kaplan, I'm in the sixth grade. And student council members are responsible for helping class advisors to plan, process, collect, distribute, and organize any class fundraisers. They often meet at lunch and after school to count money, organize the paperwork, and much more. The student council meets with class advisors to figure out which field trips will be beneficial to students. Once field trips are planned, student council members help the class advisor to collect and organize money and permission slips.
That's boring.
Any questions from the board?
Very much lighter than what was spoken.
What field trips are you guys planning?
Field trips, what field trips did you guys do?
Well, we went to the Vanderbilt Museum, we went to a planetarium, and we saw a bunny.
And then what are you doing at the end of the year?
We are going to the Mystic Museum in Connecticut.
And Riley, where are you going, seventh grade this year, which is new?
We're going to Philadelphia.
Thank you, ladies.
And the students don't have to stay, they can go home. Don't plan on a snow day, go to bed. Go to bed. Don't plan on a snow day.
I do want to thank them and add that most adults are afraid to go and speak publicly at the podium. So I'm blown away at how great you guys are. Way to go.
I'm walking out at 10 o'clock. Standing on that hill.
Good evening, everyone. Hello. So the superintendent spoke to cabinet several weeks ago and brought up the idea of speaking to how we measure student success in the Sag Harbor schools. So the administrators from both buildings got together and tried to put to paper what it is that we consider when trying to look at whether our students are successful. And so tonight, we're not going to get into the data, we're just going to get into what is it that we look at in trying to make that determination. Do you want to do social, emotional? That was our first one? Yeah. So as Mr. Nichols and I touch upon, and this, remember, this is K through 12, touch upon the items that we as administrators, along with the faculty and staff, look at when measuring success. We're going to talk about academics, we're also going to talk about communication, which is so important between the home and school and also the social, emotional piece, how we help children develop the habits that will lead to future success. Self-discipline, responsibility, but also that key factor of how they get along with their peers and of course with the, with the adults in the building. We also want to make sure that they're growing up healthy, both physically and emotionally and spiritually. So we take a look at attendance, lateness, which is a, you know, a common data point looked at in all schools, but sometimes could be an indicator of issues that may need some further investigation. We also do a lot of day-to-day just observation, how are things going throughout the buildings during something like lunch hour or passing in the hallway? That's some key observations that can be really effective for us as administrators or members of the faculty. And believe it or not, the drop-off pickup is very informative as well. So I haven't been out there for like the last month and a half because it's been freezing, but the first three or four months of the year, Mr. Guinan's been out there regardless of the weather, but the first three or four months of the year when students are dropped off in the morning, you can tell an awful lot just watching the exchange when they, when they get dropped off with their parents, whether or not they're screaming at each other, whether or not they're argumentative. Those are all telling images, if you will. And if needed, you can intervene right away. Correct. And the same can be said for going into the lunchroom and making sure that kids are sitting with one another. If you notice a student sitting alone, you try to rectify that right away because you never want a student to feel isolated. You can observe a lot in the hallways, between classes, those kinds of things. We, of course, value participation in all the different extracurricular, co-curricular programs that exist here in the district. So we're always trying to ensure that there's strong involvement school-wide. But if we notice that there are students who may not be participating in those types of activities, as educators, we're trying to reach out and get them involved because of all those important benefits that come from involvement in such programs. Of course, we do, we do have to keep an eye on our discipline referrals throughout the course of the year. And if patterns exist, that's where some maybe additional intervention may be needed. There are formal meetings throughout the year at both buildings through our PPS department led by Ms. McCrimmice. And we take input from all those professionals to put things under review. Of course, we speak with our school nurses to make sure that all the health factors are being met. At the high schools specifically, there are different surveys that are done over time and the data from those, those measures can lead to some different decisions at the building level. Conversations with our wonderful transportation department, kind of on Mr. Nichols' point, is key because whether it be the morning or the afternoon ride to and from school, we can, we can learn a lot about how students are doing here in our, here in our district. So our next one is academic, okay, yes. So much like we did with social, emotional, we tried to break down the various considerations with regard to looking at how we measure academic success or what's happening academically. Obviously, there's classroom data and observations. Observations can be formal or informal. Probationary teachers have to be formally observed three times a year. Tenured teachers, a minimum of two times a year. In addition to those observations, there are walkthroughs that happen on a daily basis. You can get a good idea of whether or not positive things are happening in the classroom within several minutes, usually if you're just walking around the building or popping in. We look at parent portal to see whether or not teachers are keeping that current. Sometimes unfortunately they aren't, but for the majority of the time they are. We have progress reports that go to parents at the five-week intervals between when report cards are issued. So report cards are issued, I believe, four times per year and progress reports are issued four times per year. So there are eight notifications a year that go out to parents regarding how their students are doing. Mr. Millen, you want to talk a little bit about AmesWeb? Sure. At the elementary school, we utilize a tool called AmesWeb. We monitor students, all students all throughout the building, three times a, three times a year. And that data is compared to students nationally. So it gives us a good sense of how would a class be doing or how would a whole grade level be doing compared to peers nationwide. And then we can also use that probe as a way to identify individual students who may be struggling and then provide intervention and monitor that throughout the course of the year, also in the classroom. And this is a recent installment, we use the Fanta's and Penel benchmarking assessment system. And that's truly designed to guide the teacher's instruction, get to know your class as readers and then P&amp;L the instruction that they may use to progress. Ms. Cariero, you want to talk a little bit about the math program?
Yeah, so we use, we started the math program a few years back and we've seen noticeable increase in our student achievement, especially in the Regents courses, when they access them. It's dependent on how the teacher uses it. So they, sixth, seventh, and eighth all use it, but they use it very, very differently. So Mr. Terry and Mr. Masters in the sixth grade, they use it every week and then they also do benchmark assessments through it as well. It also monitors what standard they're hitting and whatnot, but also at the same time, it also sees what holes we have, they might fluency. And it's a variation of that for seventh and eighth grade depending on the teacher, but that's what we're using. Seems to be working out well.
So the, a lot of the...
Sorry, I've been playing off it. But math is not always on the computer, they're doing, they're doing work as well.
A lot of the, the next bullet points are quantitative in nature, so three through eight testing we look at. That's valuable to see how our students are meeting the standards set forth by the state. Those numbers are somewhat compromised because of the opt-outs. Depending on the number of students who opt out, the picture is not necessarily accurate with regard to how the entire class performed. That's not the case with the Regents assessments because everybody sits for those. You don't have the option to opt out because they're necessary to graduate. And those are issued grades eight through 12. IB AP scores, enrollment analysis speaks to the percentage of students who are accessing upper-level courses. So when you look at, for instance, math, math achievement at a high school, you've got to be, you've got to consider what percentage of students are accessing Algebra II versus stopping at Geometry or Algebra I. And what percentage of students are accessing IB or AP level coursework, those types of considerations. PSAT, SAT, ACT, we compare those numbers both locally and nationally. The IB scores, by the way, are referenced to two other international schools and schools who offer the IB program. College applications and admissions, we want to track where students are applying to schools. What, what, what schools are they getting into, what schools are they being denied entrance to? And can we glean any information about what we need to do better in terms of preparing students to get into the schools that they really want to go to? to go to? And then, Mr. Malone, you might want to talk a little bit about child study team.
So, as, as the administrators spoke, we, we mentioned the value of all the conversations amongst the professionals, which really occur on a daily basis, often impromptu in the hallway, those conversations, what can I do to help this student, they may be struggling with X? Do you have any good ideas? But there's also some, some formal mechanisms in place at, at both buildings, child study team. IST stands for the Instructional Support Team Model. We utilize that at the elementary school, and of course, grade level meetings. And much of the data that Mr. Nichols and I have been touching upon is brought to those conversations, analyzed, different plans are developed, and then carried forth, and then come back together and see if those interventions are successful, and if not, make some more adjustments and then move forward.
Want to talk a little bit about homeschool communication?
Sure. So, I think all, all schools know the connection and communication between the building and the home is key to a student's success. So, here in Sag Harbor, I think we pride ourselves on always reaching out and offering ourselves up for conversations with, with families, having kind of an open-door policy is something that we really value, knowing that those, those calls or emails between teachers, administrators, and the home is really important. But there's also some formal mechanisms in place, like the parent-teacher conferences, which happen a few times each year, and if not enough time is allotted during those formal conferences, then, then meetings can be set up between parents, family members, and, and the school. Different letters are sent home throughout the course of the year if, for example, we may notice a pattern with children being there late too often or missing too much school. Reminder, letters are sent home, and if needed, follow-up meetings would occur to try to correct a pattern that could lead to a student struggling. Mr. Nichols, you want to talk about the honor roll letters?
Yeah, we send out honor roll letters throughout the year to students in grades six through 12. PTA, PTSA meetings, we try to remain involved with those organizations. Conversations with administrators, those meetings are pretty informative, I think. Allow parents to ask questions and get answers in an informal setting. Morning program.
We know that, we know the value of a gathering such as morning program for the students, but we also value that as a chance for the school to develop a stronger connection with parents and the home. So, it's a, it's a great forum for a parent to just grab the ear of a, of a teacher or administrator and, and share something that may be on their minds. We utilize the email blasts and some of the robocalls or text message, messages throughout the year to send important, important notifications home. In the different buildings, the teachers have their, their websites, and those are updated to share important information with families. At the elementary school, we have a weekly newsletter that goes home, and, and different events are discussed through that forum, and of course, the district website is a great vehicle to keep that connection strong.
Yeah, that about covers it. The one other area that we're looking at, which really could speak to social, emotional, and academic, is tracking students when they leave Pearson. It's, it's more complicated than, than it initially appears primarily because of the ability, your ability to track is directly tied to students' willingness to respond to the questions that you pose. I know that Mr. Guyan had some experience with this, probably related to funding as well, in a lot of the schools that you worked to start in urban centers.
Yeah, so, the National Student Clearinghouse collects and provides data, which is a nonprofit, and I think we probably used their services in the past. Most people aren't satisfied with that. It's very aggregate data. It's really zoomed out, and I think schools are much more interested in figuring out how their kids are doing in much more specific ways. So, I do know that some of the foundations that funded a lot of the education reform in the city and in other places around the country invested in certain charter networks and certain nonprofits that opened actual public schools within districts to track this and spent millions of dollars and found out, I mean, they weren't entirely satisfied either. What they found out was that there's usually like fifteen percent of the kids respond to the email every year, and the rest of them don't, and they really don't get the type of information that they want. It is somewhat of a holy grail data point because everybody wants to know what happens at the end point, not just where they go to college, but what happens with them in their lives. So, the, the only real educational research that is able to do that has been heavily-funded studies, like the preschool studies where they see how they're doing in sixty-five. But those provide financial incentives and are very well-resourced and have a lot of hooks in to track people in ways that are very expensive. So, it's something that we're definitely interested in, but I don't know, we have some setting expectations on what we could actually achieve.
So, that does it.
Any questions from the board?
Yes. Do you know, how many times did parent, parent logs on to parent portal? Can you tell who's checking and who's not?
No, you can't.
Absolutely.
Oh, no.
Does that mean I need to go to use my-
Well, yeah, I mean, I just think-
And when parents tell us that they looked at the thing and they didn't, that's always a fun conversation.
Correct. That's, that's, that's the reason I bring it up, because you put in so much effort into making all of these tools available, and, and they should be used because they're great tools. And so, there you go, parents, just telling you right now, we're spying on you.
We're not spying on you. The board has no idea.
My, my two high school kids get very angry at me and say that I shouldn't be checking in on a daily basis because the teachers are not timely and that they really should have some more time.
See, my daughter's giving me a guilt trip. Mom, you really should be looking at it. My teachers tell me that you should be looking at it.
I will say that I questioned a, okay, no names here, right? So, it's my own kid. But I, but in theory, I'm going to say why I think it's a, I just pulled a transcript, okay, because I'm looking at that college level, and I looked at what was the current first and second marking period average. And now, I can add, you know, and, and eighty and a ninety should be an eighty-five average, and it was, it's not real numbers, ninety-five average, and it was a ninety-three instead.
Yes.
So, I emailed Mr. Mengeon and said, what mathematics am I doing wrong? And it turned out that I didn't add the midterm grade in. So, I got it, you know, I learned something too. So, that's why I think parents need to go in there and check them.
And on transcripts, all those things are weighted differently as well. So, honors courses, AP, and-
Yeah, no, I mean, I'm not getting into that. I'm just saying it's there, and everybody should look, so I'm glad you know when nobody looks.
There's a history.
Dog ate the homework.
Any other questions from the board?
I, I just have a couple of questions. One, in terms of the academics, are there kind of goals set as you get into the year of what some of the academic achievement levels that you want so that you measure against that versus just kind of in general?
Well, a couple of things. I'll speak for the middle school, high school, and then you can speak for the elementary. You're looking at assessment results year in and year out and over multi-year periods. So, if, if, let me give you an example with mathematics. We made a determination that our mathematics department was achieving at a level not consistent with the three other disciplines, English, social studies, and science, and that determination was made, I don't know, six or seven years ago. And since, since we made that conclusion, we made some program changes and set some goals. Program changes being an increase in instructional time, introduction of some self-help programs, some professional development, reevaluating the percentage of students who are accelerated, all those kinds of considerations. So, that is what happened in math. That also happens in all the content areas year in and year out. And we not only zero in, in terms of departments and disciplines, we also zero in more narrowly and focus to specific teachers as well. So, if we've got teachers who are exemplary, then, you know, the bar for their performance is up there. If we have teachers who, over a period of time, their students haven't performed at the level that we think they should be based on their past performance, then we're going to devote some resources and attention to that teacher and set a goal that reflects that. Finally, we also follow grade levels as cohorts, and our categories in their performance year to year, and so, you don't necessarily apply the same lines to each cohort because they have a different performance history, if you will. We have high goals for everyone, but we have to be realistic.
The other piece where the data has been very helpful, speaking at the elementary school that I know, progressing up through the grades, is at the individual student part. You know, in the field of education, we've really come far with using that data to move past the subjective things like, oh, they're really improving. Well, let's see the numbers. So, we're picking a student, say, out of, out of a class for reading intervention. We want to see that growth over the period of time, say, six months, and if we're not seeing substantial growth, then we need to change something and do something different. So, so the data has become very informative for, you know, educators as a whole, but specifically here in Sag Harbor, we've utilized it a lot.
It even helps us be urgent, because before we had really good data, we could sometimes, you know, a decade ago, we could let children move from year to year and just be hopeful.
Sure.
But instead, it creates, creates our urgency around children, which I think Helen was speaking about, because we had teachers trained in at Willingham and in the Wilson Reading Method, and those are the things that have helped us be really urgent so that they don't fall behind.
We're also, at the high school level, I'm sure you do similar things at the elementary, we're also referencing data and using that data to suggest appropriate performance levels in related disciplines. So, it's not unusual for us to take the SAT score in math, for instance, and correlate that to what should be the expected achievement in AP Calculus. You can do the same thing with PSAT scores. You can do the same thing with the verbal part of the SAT. Obviously, there are holes or limitations to that evaluation and the validity of it, but there, there are always comparisons that I look at and the other administrators as well. And there's even, there's even cohort analysis. So, if you've got a whole group of IB diploma students who are spread across four disciplines and three of the disciplines, the students are achieving at a very high level and, and one discipline they're not, then there's a discussion that needs to be had, not only with the students, but with the instructor to say, hey, are you aware that, you know, your students are performing at a level not congruent with what they're doing in the other three disciplines, something like that? And those conversations happen at least every marking period, but usually more often than that.
Some districts do kind of dashboards or report cards every year where they kind of have their, you know, the, the key indicators and where they're, they are at. Have we considered doing that? I know there was discussion about it several years ago. I don't know if there's, has there been any discussion about that?
There's, the last significant discussion, I can speak for the middle school, high school, was a philosophical discussion three or four years ago about whether or not to break out strictly quantitative performance from the other attributes that currently are included in the grade. So, right now, we include classroom participation. We include like an attitude, if you will, in terms of the effort that they put in. That's all put into a grade. There has been discussion, if you read research, that some schools actually break them out and issue one grade for those qualitative measures and one for the quantitative. We chose as a faculty not to do that, but that was the last serious discussion we had, at least at my level.
Similar at the elementary school.
Other questions?
Yeah, just a question on the academic point. We've had a couple of robust discussions here about what we're going to be doing with in the middle years, and I think last time we heard some very good suggestions about at least some of the things that we might be doing. I'd hate to see that just kind of die on the floor. I don't know if it needs to be tonight, but I think it would be good for us to continue that discussion. Where we're headed with that.
That is the, that's definitely the plan. We're definitely going to be coming back and giving you, taking from what's theory into how that's going to go into practice. That is definitely-
We already started discussing it while we were doing scheduling for next year.
Yeah, that's going to implementation phase.
Okay. Good to hear. So, we'll be discussing what we need to do with something?
Yes, yes, absolutely.
Anything else from the board? All right, thank you. We're next moving into policy updates.
Can I make a suggestion? We have a guest here for the HUGS program presentation. Do you want to put them to the-
Yes.
Next on the, next on the agenda is policy. You want to swap them?
It's, mind them, it's very brief. It's just an update is that we have moved through the policy for to eating on the bus. I, I don't want to go, I emailed it out to the board, and we should be, we're making a subcommittee to finalize it, and it should be coming before the board next, next month. We think we have a great plan for students to be able to eat on the bus for any of the long trips, not just athletic. We feel really good about it. We'll be communicating it, so we think we have it solved for this athletic season and for any long trips for, for our students. And that means that we will now be able to move the, the policy committee into fundraising and into, looking at the policy of fundraising and we'll be into the policy for student government. And as you saw, our student government's in a pretty good way, so we think we should be able to move through those policies before the end of the school year. So, I think by next month, you'll be looking at it, and we'll be able to go into the implementation phase.
Now, as a new policy, does that go through that first read, second read thing?
Yeah, but we can implement it with first read.
Okay.
And so, so when you emailed us already, you don't want feedback on, you want us to wait till you come back with a more formal document?
Do you have a first read concern?
I do, but if we're not going to discuss it tonight, then I'll wait till when we get it. I'm asking what you would prefer.
Well, why don't we have, why don't we have Kim do her presentation, and the board has, has thoughts of that.
Okay, can I just ask one word I missed? We went from the policy about eating on the bus, and we're going to attack fundraising and then-
Student government.
Student government.
Thank you.
Those are the two policies.
Thank you.
That was asked as a board call.
Yep, 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 got it, thanks.
All right, let's do the HUGS after-school update. Welcome, welcome.
I don't live the furthest west, but I do, do a little, do a little west, so.
And the snow's not starting until midnight, I just checked.
Oh, good, so I'll get home before it, so that's awesome. First of all, I just want to commend the school because I'm in a lot of board of ed meetings, I'm in a lot of schools, but just for a moment to, you know, from the youth presentations, middle school and high school, the development of leadership, to social, emotional conversations, to taking on big issues like violence, you guys, you guys hit all the notes, and, and it's, it makes me happy and proud that we are collaborating with you once again on, on another project. To that end, we are, we are set to go. We, the program is, ladies, get some, some new equipment into it, it's all in order, it will be in there soon. We have put one and a half, oh, sorry.
It's okay.
There was a slide.
Just helping you go.
Woo, that's us, right. So, we have secured staff for the, for the program, which is a huge challenge. Nobody wants to work between three and five in the afternoon. I'm not so sure why that's not an attractive position for people, but it's not. But we have gotten a couple of staff, and we're so excited about them. They are from your community, which was so important to us, that we put people supervising your program who were part and embedded in this, in this community. We also, in addition, have our staff who's involved in our after-school program back in West Hampton Beach, and what we really want to do is parallel both programs, and I want to speak to you about the success of what we have in the past. We find that it works really well to have an after-school program that is youth-led, youth-driven, youth-inspired, like all of our programs. And so, what we really want to do is when we get a cohort of young people in there, we want to have them really help design the programs and design all the different activities. The program will, of course, have recreational activities. Your system in your area is set up really nice, and that will be able to get a pool table in there, securing some additional funding to get ping-pong tables and some additional equipment as we can, so that there will be a variety of different things. What's awesome about your setup, which is different from other setups, is you have that courtyard area that makes supervision of being outside and inside a real easy task for us by stationing one, one staff out there, with them having can-jam tournaments, you know, throwing frisbees around, hula-hoop, things where they could be a little bit more physical and get some fresh air and play. At the same time, the inside activities, which will include board games and, and da-da-da-da, video games, homework help, arts and crafts, and making sure that all of the activities we have have a connection to, not just that they're fun- not just that they're fun to do, but there is a, some extra element to it. For instance, last week in West Hampton, the kids painted all sorts of rocks for St. Patrick's Day and they had an inspirational message on it. And then they, the drop-in center staff went all throughout town in West Hampton Beach and buried those rocks all over the place. And all week long, people have been finding them and then they put us up on social media, hashtagging us with a found rock, which has been a great way to not only connect what our middle school kids are doing, but to connect it with the community outside as well. And those are very similar programs we're looking to get built here. Certainly slow going, we certainly are going to need to bring in a lot of, I'm talking to staff today about, you know, pulling kids in, whether we have a couple of ice cream, following your wellness policy.
Oranges.
Oranges, yes, and orange social. But to do things that'll draw kids in and get them really inspired about being there. Today, I knew the emails went out because my email blew up today, my cell phone blew up today. Everybody wanting to know about the program and what it means. And what I'm going to ask for everybody to kind of help with is, a couple of parents called me today and said, by the way, I hear that this is a drug and, this is for kids who are at risk for drug and alcohol and only they can go to the after school program, right? So we know that there's some kind of miscommunication just based on the fact that HUGS is, you know, our specialty is drug and alcohol prevention, but it's really youth development and positive youth development. So I will ask for all of you to help us in making sure that, that this is a safe place for youth to be after school supervised, engaged in positive activities and learning different leadership styles and learning how to conflict resolve and learning how to be a leader and find their voice and find different ways that they can find their place in their community that gives them a sense of belonging. So we look forward to get this rolling. We know we, we're a little bit behind where we wanted to be on that. I take all the hits on that as we can and we're, we'll make it turn into something we're all really proud of and that fits the need of your community. The other thing that we love doing in West Hampton and we want to encourage your school to get involved with as well is bringing in community leaders who have a special task or a skill set or something that they do and have them mentor and teach that to the young people as well. Like, for instance, we'll have a local yoga, yoga person, not with an R, yoga person, come in and teach yoga to the kids as a way of teaching mindfulness and stress reduction so that they can excel on those PSATs and on the field and all those other things. We've had, we had our National Guard come in and talk about all of the different things. And that's, although that seems pretty far west, that certainly, you know, serves your members here. And so it's important again for them to have that community connection. The, one of the staff that we've hired is very much known for her enrichment programs and so she doesn't mail local libraries and she's already like telling me, Kim, I want to do cooking. Kim, I want to do gardening. Can we do a community garden outside the school? And so let's get the kids in there and let's have the youth design the programs and begin to then push, can we do community gardens and such? So, I'll breathe because I know I come here and I just run my mouth and I don't breathe. So can I, what do you need to know, want to know?
Can you kind of go over the structure as far as, is it six through 12? Do they have to sign in? Do they have to sign out?
Right.
Like the logistics of it.
So, so this isn't childcare, right? So it's always an at-will program. Young, our policy for us is that once a student signs in, they are ours. But if they choose to leave, they can sign out. We will strongly encourage parents, and I understand, I'll tell you what we do in West Hampton and what we want to do here too. Once they sign out of our program, it's our policy that they leave school grounds. Because what we don't want is our kids hanging out and suddenly it's like, oh, those drop-in center kids are hanging out all over the place. If we're not supervising them, we really want them to make sure that they're with an adult or with a parent or they go some, they, they go elsewhere. And we will, we will push to do that. And I want to respect the culture of Saft Harbor and the culture of the school. And I also want to make sure that we're saying, you know, we're doing what we feel is right by, by the young people. We're going to encourage the high school kids to be involved and mentor and they can build community service. They can help us design the programs. They can certainly be a part of, our target age will be, you know, our target groups are generally six, seven, and eight with the high school leaders working. And we find in West Hampton, the high school leaders, first of all, love coming in and volunteering because they rack up community service time, encourage community service hours, which is such an important thing.
I'm sorry, it started today?
Yes.
How many kids showed up?
One.
Because they, it didn't get blasted.
So we're waiting on the commitment, the rest of the equipment to come in, but I will tell you, a staff member sat and had a very incredible game of chess with that young person.
Boy, that's wonderful. And I'm sorry, there's two staff members?
Two staff members.
Are they a secret? Don't answer. And is that a secret as to who they are?
No, Deborah Mar, so there's, right now you have four. You have Deborah Marshall is here four days a week, two days a week. You have Erica, I can't remember my own kid's name and so on, can't pull her name, but I'll, it'll come to the forefront. Then you have Briberg, who's on my staff in West Hampton, is going to be here as many, two to three days a week. Jackie, who's in here anyway, she teaches your evidence-based program in your high school, will be here on Thursdays until we can fill that position.
So the minute that table soccer wifi is dry erase and all these arts and crafts things show up, you're going to be too many kids in the room. I can guarantee it, that's right. So they need to fill out this form, sign up for them in the main office.
So we, so Jackie went into all the sixth grade and she, in her, as she, as she was teaching her program, talked about the program in the sixth grade, did a commercial for it. We do require forms because if I need to call a parent for an emergency, I need to have a good old form that gives me the contact and I won't be able to access your files and your records. But because they're in our care, we do ask that everybody fills out a form so we have the control over the group that's there.
Can I just ask a question? I brought this up before you came in. We talked about this whole issue of them having to leave the building right afterwards. And yet we have so many things where sometimes sports start later, the play.
So Kim just spoke about what they did in West Hampton. I talked with the staff today and met with them with Marcus and we discussed that they're going to have a pass thing where if they have somewhere else to go, they will just show them a pass and that's where they're going.
Good.
But mostly they, and they also were talking about how to exit that room so that they know they're actually exiting the building. So we actually had that long discussion today. It's going to be, there's going to be kinks. We know that, so we're going to have to work through them, but we're on top of it. And the staff all has my cell phone, we have Marcus's cell phone, so everybody's on board with talking to each other as well. I didn't mean to cut you off, but yeah, no, we did, no.
I just think that one of the nice things about the old program was that flexibility. And so sometimes those kids are dropping in, even if it was just for a short time, before they were going to something else. And so I wouldn't want to see us lose that.
Absolutely. And that's right, like meeting, meeting your school, where your school's culture is at. One of the, some of the feedback we had gotten in some focus group conversations with folks about, about how, there was a lot of concern about young people just kind of being on campus. And, and so it was really important, it's really important to us that young people, you know, have some supervision or somebody knows where that young person is. So we want to make sure that we're doing our job of ensuring that. And we have no, if a kid wants to sign out at four o'clock and they're going down to robotics or whatever the thing is, rock on.
Okay, can I go back to, folks that didn't read the email, blast the community members that are upset that it didn't start on time. So now we're being videoed and started, it's Monday through Thursday from three to five.
Yep, five fifteen, I think.
Yeah, five fifteen.
Three to five fifteen. So I want my sixth grader to go to this after school. Do either parent need to fill out the form?
Uh, yeah, there's parent information on that form.
Do I have to sign as the parent or can my kids start coming tomorrow without the form filled out?
Uh, we like to have as much information on our end as we possibly can. It is on your website, both high school and middle school website. It has been emailed to the, to the families. I'm handing you right now a copy of the schedule that we followed in West Hampton for this month, which we're going to mirror here in SAG and as well as our application form for the parents.
Super. Can you play bingo legally in schools?
Sure. Bingo night. So it's just not, no, yeah, there's no wagering.
Good. And I think that we should have bingo night, I just want to throw that out there. I just played bingo in Aruba, so I, I thought it was very much fun and we won a ice cream. So.
And as long as that matches your wellness policy, I'm golden.
Oh shit, oranges, oranges, oranges. Damn, okay. Yeah, well, my time's limited, yeah. So before. Before I graduate from the board, I want to eat in the cafeteria, but I also want to come to the, can I come to this? Can I visit or parents are not allowed?
No, no. And again, we, what we want to do is certainly we're not going to just say, any adult come on in because we want to have some controls on it, but absolutely, talk with our staff, especially if you want, you have some kind of add to, we want you to add to, right? So just communicate with our staff and that will certainly be, that will certainly be all you need to do.
I just think out of curiosity, did some folks want to, parents drop by, not stay, visit, look, see you?
Like an open house?
Well, yeah, I mean, it's brand new. There was a lot of criticisms on the old one, there were tremendous positives on the old one. I think that in the alcove, am I correct, that it's in that alcove and the lunch in the cafeteria? That this is going to create a wonderful atmosphere for these kids. And, and so I just think we should be as open as possible.
Absolutely, absolutely.
If I'm starving and I show up at three o'clock as my cafeteria closes or anything, so I can buy an orange out of the vending machine.
It's an overpriced orange.
Yeah, and in West Hampton, and I will, I will speak with the administration. West Hampton, we have like where they can purchase snacks for a nominal fee and we make sure we have a healthy balance of nuts and all that kind of stuff. But again, why.
No nuts.
Oh, no, no, we didn't say nuts.
Oranges.
Oranges. We will work to match.
We'll work on that.
What we really want to do is make sure that we are meeting you where you're at in your school and bringing in together, having that partnership. And, and we fully believe in the adult youth partnership and, and community connection.
Anything else from the board?
Well, yes.
Okay, the old program had snacks for free. So is there a budget for that? Were there snacks, the kids could just pick up a snack without having to purchase it?
In all, in all seriousness, really no joking, I think one of the, the issues with the old program is that the snacks were the candy. I think we have to be careful as to what we offer for free versus what we pay.
But healthy snacks for free.
Yeah, but yeah.
Because the old program did have that, yes.
We can, we can work on that.
I think that's a good idea.
Yeah.
Right, there was no charge for the after school.
Your school is not charging.
Right.
Your school is funding the program. No, your school is, and I will say, in, in other schools where we do this, they pay a hundred and twenty-five dollars for a kid for the year. And, and, and so that's awesome that you guys are providing the service and making it easy.
Perfect.
Two suggestions. One, I think that you will get a bit bigger turnout if you don't call it the HUGS after school program. I would very strongly suggest you change it. Even if it's run by HUGS, it doesn't matter. It still can be called something else. But I think, I think that is going to change the attendance immediately if it's renamed something else. And secondly, years ago, we moved it from the old location to the cafeteria, same program, and we saw a dramatic drop in attendance. When it moved back to the old location, it went up again. So the location you have, which physically offers a lot more flexibility, you can be inside and out, rights of provision, is, I think, a little bit of a challenge to get to draw kids there. So I think there, my suggestion is you just have to do more promotion than normal.
But the old program didn't have all these things.
No, no, I, I know that, but I'm just letting you know that it had many of these things. Many of these things. It had, in fact, they added it when it went from the, from the old space to the cafeteria.
The bean bags?
Excuse me, let me finish, please. They had, they, they had ping pong, they had all sorts of stuff because I was there many times. So I'm just saying that the location itself, it's not right next to the gym. It's not, you know, close to the auditorium. It's not near the places where kids leave to come and go. I just think you could, we're going to have to do more to get kids there. I think if the space is great because it offers more flexibility, it's just was a barrier to attendance last time it was there.
Absolutely.
Other questions from the board?
I'm sorry, I can't let it go.
I want to still have a ping pong tournament against you there.
I know, bingo, bingo. But I'm gonna, I'm gonna go completely the opposite way, Chris, I'm sorry. I would not change it from HUGS because everybody loves you and understands that organization. And I think come and get a hug after school makes sense if you want to play on words. So I would caution on that.
One of the things, right, so, so I think sometimes people hear HUGS and they automatically hear anti-alcohol and anti-drug, right? And they miss the youth development, they, they miss the character ed piece of it. So part of that is on us to change that. One of the things that I would strongly feel awesome about is, once we get a core group of kids, let's let them kind of emerge what they want it to be called, what they want it to be done and what works for them.
And I also think, I'm going to disagree with you too respectfully, that, that although people could say, hey, HUGS, oh my God, they're the ones that had the non-alcohol section at the.
At the parade.
At the parade last weekend. From a youth perspective, HUGS means a retreat on Shelter Island that I met lifelong friends. So I'm going to disagree with you on that too. There's going to be thirty kids in that cafeteria and me after I walk out Wednesday, okay.
The, by the way, I don't, I want to clarify, I don't feel that way. My daughter was a big advocate of it and I actually spent a weekend on Shelter Island at the program, so I'm very familiar with it. I'm basing it on, and you know, you hear this, that those that aren't familiar with it think it's, that's where the kids that have drug and alcohol and are at high risk go. So that was just based on that. I know differently, but a lot, a lot of others don't, so just to clarify.
Awesome.
Anything else? All right, thank you.
Thanks.
So let's go back to policy update. Is this an appropriate time to get feedback from the board on that?
Sure. As long as they're working with the latest one that they were given out.
Is it, I don't know if this is.
Is that the eating on the bus one?
No, no, that's not the latest.
Do you have a copy of it though?
I don't.
I mean, I can give you the feedback based on.
Yeah, we might revise it.
Oh, yeah, you did send another email out.
I sent, I sent an email out with revised one, the policy committee met and we didn't make it for just athletes, we made it for all.
Yeah, I saw that.
Yeah.
That wasn't, that wasn't.
That's one, one was Roman numerals.
I, I don't think that my feedback is big enough in that change, but, and again, it can wait till later if you report, it's up to you.
No, no, I don't want to be.
Okay. In terms of, at the start of the season, all coaches will be retrained on how to use EpiPen, hemilipid maneuver and universal signs of choking. Are our bus drivers trained in all those?
Yes, our bus drivers, I can double check, but they're definitely chained on the EpiPens.
Right. Because if not, I would suggest that as well because we're talking about bus trips regardless of whether it's for sports or not.
But the bus drivers are clear on this that they are not in charge. They have their back to the children. They have their back to the children and.
So my question is, when kids are coming to and from school and they're eating on the bus, which they do, then, and the only adult on that bus and the only person supervising them on that bus is the bus driver.
Well, we're trying to make clear that children shouldn't be eating on the bus.
I, I understand that, but since we know that they do, they do. I'm just suggesting that our bus drivers get this additional training because if kids do eat on the bus and a child chokes and there's only one adult on the bus and they're an employee of the district, I would hope they've been, they've gotten the training needed to be able to assist that child in distress. So that's, that's my suggestion is that they, that we, that whatever adult is responsible for those children when they're on the bus on our dime, that they are trained to address those, those needs. So that was, that was it.
Anything else from the board?
Yeah, I just have a question about the timeline. You said next month, do we have a meeting next Monday?
Two, uh, two weeks from now.
Oh, I might be able to bring it.
Yeah, two weeks from now.
Yeah, it just seemed like it was done, so.
That's what I, yeah.
Oh, so that's what you meant, it's the next day. Okay, great. I think it's the, I think it's the weekend.
Twenty-six.
Right, right. Oh, no, I thought it was next week.
No, it's, we have one on the fifteen, but that's, that's not a meeting.
So it's twenty-six, okay.
All right, anything else from the board on policy? All right, so we'll move in to a couple of agenda items. We have a business item number one. Can I get a motion to approve?
So moved, a second.
Any discussion? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? Motion carries. Can I get a motion to approve personnel actions two through six?
So moved, second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? Motion carries. So a couple of items for discussion. I just wanted to take the opportunity to thank our administrators and superintendent grades for putting together the safety presentation last week. And then, speaking for myself, watching that interlogic presentation actually made me feel a lot better. I'm realizing how high-tech the program we have here and in worst case scenario actually was very, very reassuring. And so I just wanted, wanted to say thank you and then also give the board opportunity to say anything they wanted to on the matter. Any discussion?
The, the, there were a lot of ideas and suggestions that came up at the meeting. So at the meeting I raised this and I'm going to request it formally now that I, I would like to see the, this topic get. get on a future agenda this calendar year, so we can, uh, because there are parents that wanted to hear feedback about their ideas. We can talk about what the next steps are as follow-up to it. Um, this is a conversation, I think, that we don't have once, and then, you know, kind of walk away from. So, I would, and I don't know if that's, if that would be in a traditional board meeting, or, but, but I do think that there, there needs to be a follow-up.
An update.
Yeah, and, and particularly, and I agree with you about that presentation. I think it was also shared, though, that, you know, once, once that perpetrator is in your school, obviously, the impact is much stronger. So, I, I, at that conversation, I'd like to, to discuss more about how we can prevent them from ever getting into school. I know there was some interesting ideas. Um, you know, some school districts have cameras, not just at their door, but on, on their premises, so that they can monitor people who are on your property, who haven't gotten to your door. Do we do?
Sure.
So, we have them like, you know, in the corners of, of our fields and all over, okay.
And that's what the monitors are always looking at, is the parking lot and, you know, all the way out to the roads.
Okay, good, let's get to that. Anyway, so I just request that to follow, um, agenda.
Anybody else want to?
Well, I just, yeah, I echo that, I thought it was a great meeting, and a lot of really good information. I really appreciated the InterLogic, um, piece and hearing about, it, it sounded like the schools in our vicinity region were, uh, really responded thoughtfully after Sandy Hook, and that we were ahead of the curve compared to some other regions of the country. So, um, I was happy to hear that side of it. The one thing I did think was missing, and you can't do everything, it was already a very large panel, was the, the piece on, not just the physical security, but the prevention, the mental health piece. And so, I would love to either have a separate workshop that focuses on that piece, because to me, that's a piece that we are all a part of. Parents, the school, teachers, the staff, um, you know, and just in looking at that data of who the shooters tend to be and what the situation is.
Your piece was fabulous.
The whole, oh, thank you.
It really was, yes, thank you for sending that.
Thank you. Um, the whole issue in terms of isolation, um, and what we're doing. And I know we do do a lot, and it's wonderful to hear all the things we do. But unfortunately, like communication, this is one of those things that there's always ways to do better and clearly, you know, and I think you made a good point, no, no community is immune, so, um, but I did think it was interesting, um, when you look at the data. So, I think to have some kind of session that does, looks at this from a data-driven perspective, and not just, uh, an emotional perspective, and I mean that from an emotional reaction perspective, because I recognize everybody's scared, we're all scared, um, but to do this thoughtfully. Because I also, as much as we all course every child, every teacher, every staff member should be able to come to work and be, and just be able to say, but I also would hate to see us become a prison environment, lose morning program, lose the things that are so important. I mean, you heard some people say that, you know, not to send the kids outside. I mean, no, we, we can't do that. Can't do it that way. Um, and, uh, so, anyway, so just to figure out that, looking at those issues from that next step, so that when we do make decisions about whatever we're doing, that we're looking at all pieces of us.
Exactly. Anybody else?
Just to piggyback on top of the mental health issue. I'll be going to the, um, mental health summit next week. And I'm sure that's gonna be a hot topic, and they're gonna have a lot of things to say on it. Also, with the mental health, it also goes to the drugs and other excessive behavior. So, I think, you know, when we talk about mental health, we're not just talking about violence. It's, it's literally everything. Um, you know, one of the things I, I realized afterwards that we forgot was, um, fire chief. Because a lot of times, the parents are like, let's just lock all the doors. And it's like, there are laws, and there are rules, and I, you know, I think, I, I, in retrospect, I think we should have had, uh, the fire chief there, um, as well. And also, you know, I thought it was really good, because there was a lot of misinformation going around, and there's a lot of people just, just didn't know. Um, and, you know, when people start talking about these heavy tactics, like bulletproof windows, they have to understand that.
Metal detectors.
Well, not, but, but bulletproof windows and everything, there, there's a lot of fire issues with those. And a lot of schools have had to remove them, because god forbid there was a fire, um.
You can't get out.
You can't get out.
You can't get out.
Can't open them?
Um.
No, you can't break the glass if you need to get out before.
And the same thing with.
The glass from breaking the other way, so.
I know the one, the one-point entry. I don't know what the rule is with that for fire. Um, a lot of parents have asked about closing elementary fire doors, and it's my opinion.
So, this is, so those are all good things, I think we have a follow-up.
Yeah. Anybody else want to join in?
January, just, I saw your post that you were attending this. Is it open to the public, what you're attending?
I don't think so, it's NISBA.
It is NISBA, that's what I thought, okay. Thank you for going.
Thank you.
But, yeah, teacher-school issues, but the, the next, after you go, because I think it's great that you're going, and I appreciate that you're, that you can do that. At the next public board meeting, maybe you can give a summary or update, and then those, you know, parents that are interested can get, get the information that way.
And if it does want to?
I did want, um, one of the feedbacks that I've gotten that is, you know, what I call a, kind of an easy lift, um, that, you know, like where Matt made the change, is we have three retired, um, security guards. They're retired police officers, and they're wonderful, and they're thoughtful, and they know every child's name. But when we've sat down, we're sitting down as a cabinet again on, um, Wednesday to go back over, and I really want to give so much credit to the cabinet and how hard they have worked. Like, this presentation didn't get sent out, because we were working on it today, because we spent so much time working and meeting with, um, our local authorities, um, is that we do not have a, a security guard the entire time children are in the buildings. Um, they leave at seven o'clock, and a lot of times, children are here until nine. Um, I would like to be able to post for another security guard, and we have it, we have room in our budget for that. Um, and put it on our, for our next Board of Education meeting, if we can find somebody who would like to, um, you know, we have, we have another part-time person, and, you know, have our cabinet meet and vet somebody else. Because right now, you know, I would, I would really like another person. And I think that would be, I think that's something people notice. Like, people came up and said, you know, at seven o'clock, or I came here at seven-thirty to drop my, you know, child's bag off, and there was no one here, because we do let the security guards go at seven, seven o'clock. And, you know, having an extra person to bring in, maybe to help out in the morning at the elementary, I think that would be a really smart thing for us, another set of eyes and ears. And I think, you know, they, we pay them roughly twenty-eight dollars an hour.
Is that for this, this, uh, school year?
Right.
I, I apologize, Katie, you're tricking them out here at seven P.M. at our main entrance.
Well, it would bring us from three people to four people, so that would give us our flexibility to have a wider spread, you know?
With leaderships.
Yeah, with leaderships.
The only reason I'm saying that is I would love to see, yes, I would love to see someone there until nine, but I'd also like to see someone down in, in that gym.
Yes, that's what I'm talking about, yeah. So, someone also who could just run the gambit, like somebody sit at the desk, but then we have somebody can go to the middle school, can go to the elementary, and then we can, that'll give us just enough room that maybe we can have two people present, you know, one outside and one inside during morning program. I think it's smart.
And, and, you know, I'm sorry, because it was that, I couldn't come last Thursday, but have we ever thought about a, a desk just similar to what's here at our main entrance down at the high school gym doors?
You need it all day?
Well, we have that, that is supposed to be locked, but, yeah. If that's something, you know what, it's a, it's a great idea, and I'll bring it back to campus.
Or events at night? I mean, I mean, I, here, here's the thing, nothing is gonna stop something like horrific like that from happening. But I feel like when you walk in our main entrance, there's locked doors and a, and authoritative-looking someone in a desk. When you come in and out of the gym, I feel like you could kind of open the door and sneak in to watch your kid play, practice. Maybe we need a, a stop there. I'm not saying it's gonna help, I just, I, I, I feel like that, that we should recognize that there's as much traffic going in and out, if not more, of those gym doors than there are in this front door.
Well, you know, and drop-off in the morning, you can drop off in the back parking lot.
Which is why I'm suggesting.
But those, but those doors are monitored, so the three.
Okay.
Yeah, there, there, there are three doors that are open in the Jermaine, the Jermaine lot where Mr. McLaughlin is and the cafeteria where Mr. O'Halloran is. And if you're talking about a prop door, that's something you can address, but the three doors that are open are monitored.
I'm talking, I guess what I'm saying, Jeff, is that I'd like to see a stationary person sit there.
Yeah, I think that we'll discuss it in cabinet.
We're gonna, we're gonna meet on Wednesday, and we can bring, because we have a, we have a laundry list of things.
I'm sure you're doing, I'm sorry, but, yeah. If I was there, I would have said, put a, put a person.
And there are some schools that when they have, um, sporting events at night, they may do this for other types of events, but I, I only go there because it's a sporting event, I wouldn't go to their play or whatever. There's one point of entrance and a security person there. And we haven't done that, so it's really been kind of open and free, but it would seem like that's another point of vulnerability that we want to consider.
I, I agree with that, and I have, I haven't looked into it, but I thought the possibility of purchasing wands for like large events or something, they can just go through, rather than doing the full metal detector thing, if it is a large-scale event, you know, when you're paying for the ticket for the game or whatever, you know, how much money does a wand cost? How, how, how do you know how to operate it? I don't know.
Well, I, but I also think that kind of goes back to Susan's point of, um.
Having a person.
Well.
Yeah.
There, there's a culture that we enjoy inside Harvard, and that's why we're here. You know what I mean? Like, there, there's a reason why we moved to this quintessential place.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and I, I do think we need to look at data and look at what our real risks are, um, and do a cost-benefit analysis of, of what we really should be concerned about, and what's such an outlier concern, that we're really being motivated by fear and not data.
Okay.
Yes, and wait, just, I, I have one quick question, and I don't know the answer. Eric, when, when there was the, the basketball game, we had a, the playoff game where you paid to get in? So, there were, there was a table, and there were two very big men wearing.
Section eleven, body secure.
Section eleven men, right?
For a playoff game.
Okay.
They're wrestling.
I know it has nothing to do with us, right? But they stopped you right there to pay your three dollars. I got in for free, because I'm a board member, I get that in order, but.
My name was on the list.
My name was on the list.
I didn't know that.
I want full disclosure!
I've been paying.
And I gave the three dollars anyway, because I felt bad. But those were section eleven security guards?
Yes.
I'm suggesting we do the same in sporting, that's all I'm saying.
Because they wouldn't know if you're a parent or not, or if you're not.
I wouldn't mess with those two big guys.
Did you guys want to weigh in? Are you guys? Yep, very good. All right, um, the other, the only other thing that's on the item for discussion, I just need to get the will of the board. It, um, somebody had suggested to me that the board do a self-evaluation. Um, the way I see it, we have three choices. We can do a formal self-evaluation using, um, a tool provided by NISBA. I emailed that tool to you guys. We can do a, um, a retreat, revisit our agreed-upon norms, and just kind of check in to see how that's going. Um, or we can do nothing. So, I would just like to.
This is actually, this is actually a fourth choice that I'd like to put on the table.
Okay.
Which is that, um, uh, many times when you do the retreat, they provide a tool for self-evaluation that they collect before the retreat, that helps inform the content and that you can reflect on with the NISBA consultant. And I have found that, um, that has, at least in my, my years on the board, that has been the most productive, because you're doing that self-evaluation, but you have a third-party facilitator, and it tends, you tend to get more accomplished if you have a third-party facilitator. And I, that might be something traditionally that's been done, if you're already in the spring like we are, many times that's done right after the new year starts, when you have new board members.
Yeah.
So that, um, going forward, you have that productivity with the, with the team. So, that would be door number four, I'm putting it to you.
Okay. Um, so, does anybody want to go first, as far as getting the will of the board?
I just.
Yes.
Wanted to say something. Um, oh, the self, yeah, doing the workshop combo. The NISBA self-evaluation tool is actually the same exact one.
Right.
That we do fill out before the workshop with the person there.
Right.
As to the timing, I actually disagree with you on that, because last time we did it, Alex and I just got on the board.
Mm-hmm.
And so, we were like, hey, we don't have any issues, you know?
Right.
So, I think maybe if we did it before the election, I, I.
The only benefit is more that if you come to conclusions about how you want to operate this board, you have your board going forward there. I, I, I've argued both sides of it, and I was convinced, after I said, but wait a minute, you've got new board members that can't contribute, that I think the goal of it is how you want to operate moving forward. So, you reflect on how you're doing, where your opportunities for growth are, and then you create a plan for, okay, how do you want to move forward? So, that's what turned me around from that, that position, was, okay, if you're creating a plan moving forward and not including all the team members you're gonna be with moving forward, are, are you missing out on an opportunity? So, that, that was just the background.
So, what I would like to do, I'm a little bit concerned about this discussion, um, taking a long time, so I'd like to put a time limit on this discussion, that we each just weigh in. Uh, yeah. Thank you, administrators.
Four o'clock in the morning, okay? Four thirty.
So, Dave.
Thank you. Um, so if we, uh, I think that we can make this decision in ten minutes. All right, a couple of minutes per board member, max. Um, so, we would like to weigh in with their formal weigh-in with the board. So, again, four choices. Um, NISBA tool in-house, NISBA tool, um, formal retreat with Darcy. Um, we could just have an in-house retreat without a tool, or we can do nothing at all. Go ahead.
Um, I want to throw up a different alternative. I think it's a compromise, no, it's okay.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, NISBA formal tool with an informal retreat that you would lead, because you did that before, and I think you did very well, with this board. And then we do a formal with Darcy with a new board. That's what I would.
I second that. And I agree, I'm, I don't need to add on, uh, informal in-house with us, I'll lead it, we'll do it quick.
Before the election, and then a formal one after.
Yep, we'll do a big one, um, with Darcy and the whole nine yards after.
Did you say you want to include the NISBA evaluation tool?
Oh, yeah, I think we do that, yeah, we do that, and then that becomes.
But with more new board members.
And then we do the informal meeting as a group.
Yep.
And then, yeah, so anyway, that's why I just think that knocks off all the boxes.
All right, so, um, others? You agree with that?
I don't know.
Adding a, a meeting as a thing?
No, no, we'll do it on the fifteenth, we'll just let Tom know. Uh, this Thursday?
This Thursday?
Do the board eval then?
No, 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 just the informal, just us, let's just touch base on our norms.
Oh, I think, oh, no, I, I, what I heard the suggestion was, was that, that part of that in-house was filling out the evaluation form, is what that was on the table.
Oh, I misunderstood.
Yeah, so I would, I would suggest that we, we don't do it this Thursday, because that might not be enough.
Okay, well, then I, we need to go back and get the will of the board, because I misunderstood.
Right.
Um, so, you're saying NISBA formal tool now-ish?
And now-ish, and then we would have a meeting at some point.
Same one again later.
Don't have to right away, we, we, we'd have an informal meeting as a group.
Okay, so that's S.L.
You know, based on that, and then we would, you know, have a formal one with Darcy after the election. So, in the next two, couple of months, have an internal meeting you're talking about? Yeah, and an internal review, that, because we should, we did it before, and Diana ran it, and I think it was very productive, um, so I don't see why we couldn't do that, and it saves money.
Mm-hmm. No, I, I, I absolutely agree. I was planning on, um, calling Darcy to do a formal retreat after the election, because we'll have two new board members.
Yes, you will.
Well, possibly. Well, possibly.
Or one, or one new board member.
We have two seats, definitely one more, one more board member, two seats.
There will never be as funny as me.
So I was, I was planning on doing that anyway. The only piece that I wanted to nail down tonight is, um, I was planning on, um, this Thursday, just revisiting our norms without using, in my view, I don't think we need to go through the eighteen page thing if, if on Thursday night, we're just gonna revisit our established norms and have that conversation. Um, I don't know that we need to do the formal evaluation tool for that, I think we can just have a board conversation. So that was what I was suggesting.
My, my only, my only concern with that is that our, our meetings with Tom tend to go longer than we ever anticipate. And I would, and I think having that conversation, it's important, it's important for it not to be, you know, nine o'clock or nine thirty and we're all tired. So, um, and, and if there is kind of an outline of things to reflect on before we walk in there, I think that's helpful too. So I would suggest tagging it onto something else or having some time of refresh. But I do, I like the idea of the evaluate, not, the evaluation, the NISBA one is in eighteen pages, it's just a hand.
It's eighteen pages, I'm looking at it.
No, no, not, not the one with self eval.
Mm-hmm.
School board self evaluation is eighteen pages, I downloaded it last night.
I went through it today. Oh, because, because.
Well, there's a lot of explanation.
There's a lot of explanation, there's a lot down to it. I mean, it's not really.
Okay, who's on person, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm lost as to what the recommendation is now that we're discussing.
What do you wanna do?
What do I wanna do? Box three, move on, forget it.
Do nothing?
Just, nothing. Don't add another meeting and.
I'm confused too, I thought we had a proposal and then it changed, um.
Um, well, I think we'll probably end up doing a formal evaluation. It's just on, on Thursday, do you wanna just have a conversation as a board, or do you wanna have everybody fill out the formal tool?
I mean, Thursday, I agree with Chris, we're probably gonna be spending a lot of time talking about the negotiation.
Okay, so do you want to, again, use the tool or not use the tool?
It has to have it on Thursday?
No.
Why don't we say the, I'm sorry.
Tools fine with me, or, yeah, tools anything else?
I'm sorry, I say, why don't we make the evaluation due Thursday? And then you can go through it.
Mm-hmm. Okay, continue that.
And then we can figure out another day to do the actual.
So you, you wanna use the tool too?
Yeah.
And Chris, you wanna use the tool?
I, I'm fine with, I mean, I, I put something else on the table, but if the majority wants the, what Susan put on the table, I'm fine with it.
Okay, so if you guys could, um, take a peek at that tool and, um, maybe get it into me by the weekend?
And then that way you can digest it and do a little workshop around.
Yeah.
Well, then, then we could put it, yeah.
And then we'll, then we'll find some dates, um, and I think, I think the board had set aside some dates. And we'll look at that, but, um, I'll have.
So, I'm sorry, just to be clear, you would like each school board member to fill out the school board evaluation that, from NISBA? And send it back to you.
By the weekend.
Monday, next Monday.
Okay.
I'm not gonna be able to look at it by.
I have it here if anybody wants.
So the one that I sent you guys, and I can send it again, um, you can fill it out on my computer.
It's writable, it was very good, yeah.
And save it and send it back to me. So I won't be able to look at it this weekend anyway, so that gives you guys the weekend to fill it out. So if you could get it to me by like, you know, Sunday night at midnight, Monday morning, whatever.
Yeah, perfect.
And just to point out, the only difference is when you fill it out and you send it to Darcy, it is anonymous. So the person receiving it, if they're on the board, then, then there's a not, that, that individual will know your comments versus, that is the one benefit of when it goes to a third party, is they've put the, the data together about how people felt, but it's not like you said this person did this or you, so there's that level of sensitivity when you're sending it.
Well.
I won't tell anybody what everybody said. All right, um, on the unfinished business, I did want to just wrap up one little piece. Um, I watched the videotape from when I was away and, um, I was listening to the resolution about the communications coordinator, and the only piece that we missed was the building communication representatives. So, um, Katie asked me if she could post that position and, um, I was unsure, so I went back to the tape. And I just wanted to make sure that we have the will of the board for her to post that, so she can put it on the next agenda for those stipends for the buildings.
The coordinator can't do their job without the information gatherers in the buildings feeding the information. So I would say that you should go ahead and post those jobs.
Others?
To me, this is, um, I've, I've seen parents very often submitting stuff for the yearbooks, for the calendar, for, uh, you know, all kinds of stuff. It just seems to me that this is a piece of what is part of the job already. So that's why I just don't understand why there is a stipend being put on that. We, we should be asking, everybody should be a communicator in the district and everybody, when they have an opportunity, should be sending stuff in. So that's my issue there. Can you talk a little bit of, can you just remind us why and what the job description is? Because I always think if you're gonna post a job, you need to know what the job description is. And if we're gonna vote on something, we should know what the job, it's hard, we should never vote on something if we don't know what the job is. So if you could, if you could just articulate that, that would be helpful.
So, um, in eleven hours, um, in a week, um, the district clerk can't, we have so many things that happen across the district that how can in eleven hours, a person gather everything that's happening in the elementary for the past week to be able to report it out and in the, know in the coming week? Because you want the document, I imagine, and I hope the board imagines, is each week, here's what happened and here's what's going to happen. And not just in the week, but maybe in the next two weeks, so that a person can fill out their calendar and start marking stuff up. So here's all the things that are gonna happen, here's what's happened. And in eleven hours, that's an impossible task, because there are gonna be things they miss. And they certainly can't document it either, because they have to get pictures of them. So at each, at each school, there would be a coordinator that would, a building communications coordinator that would, at the elementary school, at the middle school and at the high school, would go around and gather for the coming weeks things that are about to happen, and then would document things that have happened, take pictures of them. And have, and maybe it's parents that take those pictures, but they would gather those pictures. So literally, I take pictures of everything I'm at. And there's parents that I know that take pictures of everything they're at. So they would gather those and those would go to the district clerk. She might pipe, she might pipe those out, definitely once a week, that would go out to everybody, so they can fill their calendars, know great things, but they also couldn't get those out to Syntax, so they can be here to do great press releases and also, you know, like blossom those press releases. But again, in eleven hours, there's no way they can do that unless they have somebody feeding that pipeline all the time. So for example.
You don't want Victoria chasing down that information.
Right. So on Thursday, we have two engineers from Facebook that are gonna work, meet with every single one of our kids that are in, uh, coding or robotics clubs at, in during academic support. That's extraordinary. We've been, you know, that we have, my son helped set that up, and so for twenty minutes, they're gonna be doing that. That's a worthwhile story for not only inside Harbor Express, but for Newsday. Um, they're gonna be in the auditorium. I haven't got time to even get that out, I'm just organizing and just getting them in there. Those kind of things happen all the time here. We have writers coming in that are working with our students.
So the, the idea is having somebody each building who's kinda got their finger on the pulse that can gather and filter and, and, and then just shoot it, and all she's gotta do is coordinate it, organize it. She can do some formatting and then blast it out.
Literally sit, sit at her, at her desk and get it all together. And she's still, and she's still gonna miss stuff. We're still gonna miss stuff, but so much happens here.
What I'm hearing concerns me a lot more than what my impression was. Because when I go to the meeting with administrators for the middle and the high school, and I go to as many as I can based on my work schedule, but I've been on several this year, what I'm hearing from parents is they don't want a two-page laundry list of everything that's going on. What they wanna know is that if they're in tenth grade and something is happening, that's a tenth grade event, they want a specific email that goes out about this is happening next week, or this is happening in two days or whatever. And so a, a summary once a week document, while nice, I don't think is gonna get to the heart of what our communications challenges. And secondly, I don't think this is about getting it in Newsday or getting it to Syntax. It's really, the complaints that we hear about parents are very relevant, specific communication, not laundry list.
But I, I don't wanna get caught into the weeds about how the job is gonna get done, right? I, I'm just trying to get the authority of the board for her to post for that job. I think we'll, we'll figure out a good system and we'll iron out the kinks. And I, I saw a lot of discussion on the video about a survey and, and all those sorts of things. I, I, I really wanna stay out of the weeds and just at least, because I know Susan probably doesn't want, um, to give that authorization and Stephanie does. So I just need to get the will of the board.
But I, what I understand is why wouldn't you try to do this if she's coordinating? Everyone is taking these pictures anyway, why wouldn't they just send them to her?
Because there, it's not my job to take a picture at the basketball game and send it to someone as a parent. It's gonna become someone's job to do that.
Yeah, but forget about the pictures, about notifying something is happening. Wouldn't the, wouldn't the person who runs robotics, or the person who runs those things, email?
No, that was the big.
Hold on, hold on, I'm asking. No, I'm gonna do, I'm gonna do Robert's rules, okay? So I wanna get the will of the board and I have passionate board members that are trying to convince other board members of their view, and I just really need to get the will of the board. So, um.
We can't have a discussion?
Yep, one person speaks at a time, not talking at times.
Exactly, we, you don't, it, it's one person at a time, everybody gets a chance to speak. And then, once everybody has spoken, we'll go back and you can have a second opportunity to speak your views and then we'll take a vote.
That's fair.
All right, go ahead.
I think it's important that we have building level information gatherers, communicators. Yes, it's all nice, you know, when everyone says, you know, they'll send the good information along or whatever, but people don't. And I think, like you said, that's, when it becomes your job, then you have to do it. And we already probably have people with each school who have their finger on the pulse, and will, will know that information. Going forward, we will figure out what is best to relay the information. The first step is to just make sure we can get all the information in a manageable spot before we start divvying it up. And we don't want Victoria chasing down the robotics guy about some meat or whatever. We want three people to be able to tell her, this is what's going on.
Where, why, when, these are the people that need to know this is when it's happening. No, I agree.
I agree. And then that, and then once you place that position out there, then we as a board can mold that position and meet the needs of what our community wants.
Exactly.
To you.
Agree, I agree. Susan, agenda.
All right, any other discussion? Okay, so all those in favor of letting Katie post that position and we'll have it on the next agenda? Hopefully we'll get lots of applicants and we'll find some great folks. So motion carries. Uh, all those opposed, go ahead for the record. All right, um, any other, um, public input too?
Yeah.
Come on up. Thanks for your patience.
Been doing this a little while, just a little while.
You should know to just show up at nine forty-five.
No, actually, I like the, uh, the whole, uh, watching of it. A couple of things. Um, I guess I don't have to get really time, because I could just sit down and get right back up, but I do have to.
Say your name for the record.
Want to show your name?
No, I'm sorry. Uh, I just wanna say that, uh, excellent job tonight on the budget presentation.
Thank you.
Um, you actually did have zero-based budgeting in that modest one column. Zero-based budgeting was started in two thousand and ten by Janet Brenam, John Grotto and Annie Hay. So to have watched the first presentation, and again, I, I tried to ask the questions last time. Eric's not here again. When you take a sport and take two thousand and two thousand this year and then two thousand next year, and you do that for every single sport, every single level, there's no way. That's why we started zero-based budgeting, because there's no way. So all that money at the end of the budget, and that's just one example. It was seeds, there was several, I don't have my notes. At the end of the year, you're gonna have twelve million dollars left over. And when that did happen, we realized that that year, we did give back money to the taxpayers. The money was returned to the taxpayers. So I encourage Dr. Kent, who did an excellent job tonight with that in transportation, to do that moving forward with the rest of it. Because there's no way that a teacher needs five thousand dollars worth of books this year and five thousand dollars worth of books next year. You don't just get to just type with the numbers line to line. We used to do it where it was five thousand, you spent four sixty-eight, this was left over, and we put the remainder back into the budget.
So Katie, just tell me what year that was that the money?
It started in two thousand and ten.
No, the year the money was returned to the, returned to taxpayers.
I have it on my head, I'm gonna say probably two thousand thirteen, twelve, thirteen maybe? That was number one. I wanted to figure out that last year, uh, any last weekend.
And what was that, was that like?
Pardon?
Was that like a chat issue in the school district?
It went against, it went against, they, it went back to the taxpayers when we put the budget up.
So, so what would happen? The money actually goes back, uh, back into unassigned fund balance?
Yep, unassigned fund balance.
It reduced the amount that had to be taxed.
Right, 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 right.
So you don't get to keep, like, spending money just because it's there. I don't think that's frugal. Um, I did have a question about the transportation though. We did have, um, out of the blue, a two hundred thousand dollar increase in budget last year in that line item after the budget was, um, and I'm not asking for an answer today, because I know what it's like during budget season. But I'm just curious where that showed up in the line item here.
Say that again, Sandy.
So after we passed the budget last year, uh, we came back to the table and was told that there was a, um, I think the terminology was, uh, extra routes to, um, OLH and stuff like that. It came to the tune of, uh, two hundred thousand dollars in transportation. So I wonder if that's been based in there, so that would be an additional increase on what you put up tonight.
It's in there.
Tonight?
Well, I, well, that's nothing, I didn't see it, because there's no, um.
Oh, okay.
You really need to have pamphlets over there? And, um, I couldn't hear. I called you privately and had that conversation. I couldn't hear the discussion tonight, um, in the back, especially when there are other people talking. Um, and then when a room filled up, we actually, in the audience, were unable to hear the children. So I'm again going to ask for, not for one, not two, but for the third time, to please get an audio that is respectable to the public who are here to listen to those type of things. And backs to the audience, you know, is really, again, not acceptable. And then my last concern is that, um, you just added in two weeks, three weeks, four positions. Four, four positions. And tonight, you also did on a position, I don't even know how much you're paying these people. And that's not okay, guys. You need to be a little bit more vocal, you need to have a little bit more conversation, you need to have job descriptions. You need to let the public know how much we're spending on some creation that we don't even know what it is yet, but we're gonna, we're gonna appoint people and we're gonna pay them I don't know what. That's not, you guys talked about Robert's rules, you talked about board policy, that was just mind blowing to watch. So I would.
I've seen the rates.
I.
No, we, we saw, we saw.
Yeah. Uh, I didn't see the rate. I didn't see the rate. So it says, the question, you might get it your Wednesday letter, I've gotten them, you might get it, talk about in executive session. Do we know the rates? No. So you voted on something, that's not, that's really not how you wanna do business. Four positions in three weeks. So that's it, thank you, it's late night, snow day I'm sure tomorrow. Again, congratulations, I say you have a standing job tonight. Thank you.
All right, can I get a motion to withdraw in the meeting?
Well, hold on, do you wanna just clarify? Because I think we did mention the stipend at the last meeting, even though, um, I voted against and first voted against, because I think this is part of the typical job. But you, you did, I think in the last meeting, it was mentioned what the stipend.
I think it was the meeting before that, because we've been talking about it for so long.
We did, we did. It was in print.
I think it was like eight hundred.
Sandy, I have to find it, it was on one of our gems.
I, I did a, I did a full PowerPoint on it, I had the, I had the, that it was eleven hours and the exact amount, how much it was.
No, 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 that's what I'm talking, no, no, that, that, no. That, you're talking now, eleven hours, that's the district clerk.
And that's not, because it's.
No, 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 we're talking about the information.
The building communications representatives.
Yes.
Was that, was that communicated publicly how much they would make? So I'd mention it, because there's reports.
Yeah, it was four thousand dollars for three positions and it still stays under the fifty thousand dollars we already had in the budget for last year, for this year, for this year, right?
But to note, when we did vote on the, um, the coordinator position, we did not, when we voted on it, we did not have the exact amount of how much of it cost. That is accurate. We voted on it without having that publicly shared.
I said approximately thirteen thousand and it actually came out to twelve thousand something.
I know, but this is about, the protocol is that when you vote on some, a new position, um, or anything to do with money, you're supposed to state and publish how much it is, before you vote on it, and we did not do that with the public.
Can I get a motion to withdraw?
So, no.
Sorry.
Second.
Second.